Before we open the public hearing this evening, the town planner has a couple of announcements.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. My name is Katie DeLuca, and I'd just like to make a few announcements before we begin. The first one is, if you recall from a couple of meetings ago, we said goodbye to Donald Heller, our long-term regular member and chairman since 2007. And we now have Nancy Raymer, who has moved up from an alternate to a regular member. And yesterday's briefing meeting, the commission held an election of officers. And I'd like to congratulate Richard Maitland, who is the newly-elected chairman, unanimous vote, and also Margarita Albin, the secretary, also unanimous vote. So congratulations to you both. Thank you.[53.46][53.46][applause] And second of all, you may notice that we have some TVs on. This is a new process that we're starting this evening. So we thank you for being our guinea pigs, if you will. And what you are seeing on these TVs is a broadcast of Channel 79. And the broadcast, with all of the broadcasts from the network, can be viewed going to the town website. There's a link from the town website to this broadcast. So the idea behind turning these TVs on is that the cameraman will quite often zoom into the maps that are on this board, which are facing the Planning and Zoning Commission. It is not their responsibility to provide the TV for just your benefit. It's obviously for the benefit of the viewing public at home. However, of course, as I mentioned, they will be showing the map. So if you can't see the board, it's likely you'll be able to see them on the TVs and also the screen behind you. Lastly, the screen behind you is up because there are several people who have requested to show a PowerPoint presentation as part of their presentation to the commission on the application this evening. The hard copies of whatever is shown on that PowerPoint are required to be provided to the office. I believe I actually have most people's PowerPoints, but if you have not given it to me already, that is a requirement of using this system. So when people do that, you'll be able to see their PowerPoint behind you so that you can follow along that way. So with that, I will turn it over to our new chairman. Thank you.
This is a public hearing of the Planning and Zoning Commission. We have some sign-in sheets around the room. I think there's some in the back. Katie, am I correct?
Yeah.
And over at the table.
Yes.
If you wish to speak tonight, would you please sign those sheets? And we'll take you in the order that you've signed in. We'll see how many have signed up, and we'll decide then to limit testimony or not to the individuals that are going to give testimony. With that, the first item on our agenda is the Post-Road Iron Works for a text amendment on 345 Putnam Avenue, or for text amendment to zoning regulations.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Robert Burcham. I am a principal with the law firm of Burcham, Moses &amp; Devlin in Westport, Connecticut. I'm here this evening representing the applicants, the Post-Road Iron Works, and the Carrero Family Limited Partnership. Mr. Chairman, with your indulgence, there is a text change, there is also a zone change, there is a special permit and a site plan. Procedurally, I would request that you allow us to present all of them under the single procedural ambit of the evidence before you, rather than being duplicative as we go forward.
Any problem with that?
Effectively, just for clarification, that's just the transcript.
One transcript.
Would there be one transcript, and we could use the transcript for each individual application?
Correct.
And each one would be taken separately, of course, for a vote. But this is really just for the purpose of the transcript?
Exactly, and to avoid the redundancy that listening to us four times would otherwise provide.
Satisfactory.
One more comment?
The public comment will come for -- you can make the public comment when the chairman requires you to come up. Oh, I see what you're saying. Sorry, I'll leave that to the chairman.
It's a little out of the ordinary, but...
So is this.
Actually, not, but come up. Why don't you just indulge me?
As a Peter Alexander landscape architect, Greenwich landowner, I'd like to hear this presentation four times, because as long as we can delay it, the better. Thank you.[318.91][318.91][laughter]
With that statement, we will have just the one transcript for the four hearings.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So again, summarizing what is before you, albeit with a single transcript. You have an amendment of the zoning regulations to establish a new zone entitled Housing Opportunity Development Zone, a change of zone from residence RA and general business to this new zone for the property, basically at 345 West Putnam. Development, finally, of a final site plan for a proposed set-aside affordable housing development of 355 units in a five-story multifamily building complex with underground parking, and a special permit for new construction with more than 150,000 yards of cubic volume above grade. With deference to procedure tonight, I thought we had the benefit of a staff report and certain observations as to how best and most efficiently to proceed tonight. And what I would propose to do is to defer comment with regard to the proposed HODZ zone and go directly for this evening's purposes, since I understand we will not finish tonight, and address the more direct project-oriented concepts that are before you tonight.
So you will open the text amendment and the map and defer any -- and comment on that?
I will open all four, but speak only to the...
You'll open the other two, but you're going to speak to the last two, the site plan and the special permit?
I would also note that you had to, that as you quokk, commission, had to open the hearing tonight, because we have an otherwise applicable deadline of tomorrow for the commencement of the hearing. In order to make sure that we all collectively have the appropriate opportunity to receive, evaluate, and interact, we have prepared, and I will be filing with Mr. DeLuca, an extension approval request, subject to, obviously, your approval, that would take us through for the remaining 60-odd days that we have to give you, and by recollection, that would be July 9th.
Okay.
Katie, I thought we... I believe it's July 9th.
As June.
Because it is, let's just calculate this now. We're opening out on April 5th.
We gave you five days.
We have 35 days from April 5th, which takes us to... Oops. May 10th, and then we have 60 days extension from May 10th.
I see.
Which takes us to July 9th.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for doing that.
May proceed.
Sure.
The applicants own and proposing to rezone approximately 5.1 acres of land with direct access to West Putnam. The property for which the zone change, or I'll refer to the zone change, but in the context before you, it is currently a single-family residence on Oak Street and Post-Road Iron Works itself, which is a metal ironworks fabricating company, which has been in business on this site for nearly 90 years. It opened in 1927. It's a family-owned business. It has, among other things, the history of preparing. It's perhaps coincidental with 1927, the wrought iron railings that today grace the new Yankee Stadium. Today was not a good day for the Yankees, but I thought it was worth noting. The acreage in question fronts on West Putnam. It does that, as well as having frontage on Oak Street, and that's, however, limited, with a 20-foot frontage on Hemlock Street. The access that we propose is only a gated emergency access onto Oak Street and no access whatsoever onto Hemlock. So for all practical purposes, except for limited emergencies with a gated access in egress, the facility, as proposed, uses West Putnam only. During construction and afterwards, the same would hold true. Emergency access only, all other access onto the West Putnam access.
Would it be the Oak Street, would that serve as construction access, too?
It's not intended to serve as a construction access, no.
Okay.
The only relevant access in terms of the Oak Street, eventually, other than the emergency, would be for the allowing of schoolchildren. We have a limited number that we will eventually get into, providing access to the school bus service that would be off Oak Street rather than on West Putnam. Tonight's application is an affordable housing application, actually, serious thereof, as defined in Connecticut General Statute 830J, because 30% of the proposed residential units will be rented to qualified families and individuals for a price that meets the statutory definition under 830J. One half for approximately 53 of the affordable apartments will be set aside for qualified families who have earnings of less than or equal to 80% of the applicable median income. The other half will be set aside for qualified families who have income equal to or less than 60% of the median income. We'll get into what a median income is in a little bit, but for the most part, you should understand, and I think all of you have expertise in the area to some degree, that is the state median, because the Greenwich median is above and beyond, and you take the lower of the two. Upon approval, the applicants would prepare a notice restricting the use of this affordability units for a 40-year period, and that restriction would be obviously subject to both your approval and that of town council before any recordation. The median income for Greenwich right now is $127,900. The state median is $89,700. There's approximately a $40,000 differential. So, as I just noted, it's the lower of the two that's applicable. There's new 2016 data that has just come out, but it's not readily available. We may have to, before the conclusion of this hearing, update that, but we don't expect to have radical changes with regard to the actual numbers. In addition to the monthly rental calculations, our affordability plan contains, among other things, an affirmative fair housing marketing plan and a proposed rider to our leases to ensure compliance with the restrictions that we voluntarily impose. We would work cooperative with the town in the administration of all that process. The 140, I'm sorry, the 107 affordable apartments that I described would be of the same size, same configuration, and same quality as the market-rate apartments. They'll be built on a pro-rata basis, again, between studio, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedrooms, and they'll be located equitably throughout the two proposed buildings. Just for the purposes of illustrating how it would go, there'd be 27 studios, 164 one-bedrooms, 144 two-bedrooms, and 23 three-bedrooms.
Excuse me, just a clarification. It goes back a few sentences. I just had to find where this was. In some of your materials, you say that the applicant or its successor may change the designation of which housing units within will be deemed affordable, provided that you retain that 30% affordable for 40 years.
Yes.
But you might change which ones it is.
Correct.
So how would that be? You're promising that it's going to be for 40 years, but Apartment 3A would start out affordable, but it might not be affordable as long, next year, as long as a different one? It says you may...
Yes.
...change the designation of which housing units.
So that if an applicant for an affordable housing unit moved in and ultimately lost that status, or moved out and someone else came in, at all times, there had to be, would have to be a minimum of 107 units. Which those units are, they're not identified with a forever letter on the particular door. They are, in some respects, fungible, but never in number and never in count.
But then how do you make sure that each one stays affordable, that the number of affordables stays for 40 years? How do you ensure the 40 years if you're moving around which units it is?
Well, you're not necessarily moving around, but you retain mobility. The real point of it is twofold. Just because, for argument's sake, I might rent to myself or to you, and I am qualified when I'm rented. I could get a better job, I could get more money, and I could lose that qualification. So that's one component of your question.
Wouldn't you just move, I mean...
No, I'm trying to...
Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Pardon me if I'm slow. The idea is that change comes, but the one immutable part of the application is there can never be less than 107 units with matching the configurations. And we have to submit management records for a variety of purposes to ensure that that has been complied with. So it's not unilateral, it's not arbitrary. There's a mechanism which both records and reports.
Yes, and what I'm struggling with is how we're going to know, how we're going to be aware of the compliance of the 40 years if a unit can come in and out as long as you're maintaining the 107. How do we know that on an overall basis, you're maintaining that restriction for 40 years?
You're going to get certifications on it, the way I presume you may for other 830Js that you've previously approved. It's not unique to what we're doing. The units are never an 830G immutable to a particular unit. They are, in terms of quantification and proration, required across the board. So it's, there's a validation process that has to be followed.
Okay, excuse me, just a second. Katie, I think we would need to talk to the people, to Princess and her staff, because it seems that administering something like this is a lot more complex than what we presently do. I don't believe that we change the units right now. And we, as far as I know, in Greenwich, we do not. So we would have to validate that and understand how we would administer a process of this magnitude that you're proposing. And as you know, your whole proposal is of a magnitude that we have to figure out how our infrastructure is going to address it, and this is just the first question that came out. But I think we would have to find out, just look into, do we have any other units that come in and out of being affordable in town? And how does Princess ensure, how does their staff ensure that that's retained? Okay, go ahead.
I wanted to point out to you...
So sort of follow a question to that. Let's say there's only 300 units that are rented. Does that, does the 107 stay, or is it 30% of the number of units rented?
Number of units.
Okay, so...
It's not based upon a running census. It's based upon the total number which is there.
So it's always 107 regardless of...
It's 107, but which 107 is an open question. And I would suggest to you, and your current 830Js, you may have the same issue. It may not be one that you focused on, but again, under the 830G applicability, to maintain the affordability standards, the unit doesn't have to always stay that way, but the ratio must always stay that way. So you could have the issue that you're concerned about existing without validation, for all I know. I have no idea what's happening elsewhere.
Now, there's another clarification, and then I'll let you go on, but you had touched on two points. The housing opportunity units shall be of a construction quality and size that is comparable to the market rate. Somewhere in your...
Not market rate, but market quality.
No, your text says the housing opportunity units shall be of a construction quality and size that is comparable to market-rate units within the development.
Maybe you go into semantics, but there is good, no better, no worse than the units which people non-qualified would get.
There's a sentence somewhere in your material that says that they would be fully comparable as long as the people in the affordable units were willing to pay for the extra amenities. Is that correct? So they're only comparable if someone pays for what it takes to make them comparable? I was puzzled by that.
No, just the other way around. The best way to illustrate it perhaps would be, the kitchens are standard, and let's say they all have Corian. And if someone, even though whether a renter just determines they want granite, they can upgrade.
But everybody will have Corian, and the market-rate units, who pays for it being granite, then?
The tenant.
Okay. All right. Got you. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So there is a need for affordable housing in Greenwich. I think there's, you've had task forces, you've got your own actions that you've taken to somewhat address that. We think that we're part of the answer, and hopefully you'll concur with us when we're wrapping up with this process. Greenwich has less than the 10% of affordable housing that is a statewide goal per community. You've got, by my numbers, 5.32%, and you've, your own efforts to get there have perhaps less than that, but you're still substantially under the 10% that would otherwise exempt you from 830J. We think that the housing costs that are in Greenwich, and that's no secret, certainly to any resident or anyone looking at the town, represents an issue, because housing costs are high. What we're trying to do, much like you did in your 2000 Plan of Conservation and Development, is to note that particularly for young people, for empty nesters who seek to remain in town, and for people who work in town, there has to be a better way, and we're part of that solution as we envision it. Connecticut Housing, Department of Housing, reports that an adequate supply of safe and affordable housing is a facilitator of economic growth. It's not a primary focus of it, but it's certainly something that's worth noting. To grow businesses, you need workers. You've addressed that in terms of your own efforts to provide better housing for those who work for the city, those who are in your schools. And we think that we're, again, contributing to quality housing at an affordable cost. Each application under 830G has a special application format. Under that, and again, at the risk of redundancy, to some extent of what you already know, but to put it in the record, as an agency, you cannot deny or modify the text change, the map change, the site plan, or the special permit, except to protect a substantial public interest in health, safety, or other matter which the board may legally consider and which clearly outweighs the need for affordable housing. In that respect, Connecticut's case law has held that a proposal's increased density, its impact on schools, or on your grand list are not valid public interests which outweigh the need for affordable housing. If the board, you, can protect a substantial public interest by making a reasonable change to our proposal, you must do so rather than deny our application. And in that respect, interactively, we look forward to suggestions that you may choose to make. The burden of proof, at the bottom line of the discussion, rests with you and has to be based upon substantial evidence in the record. Now, our application, yes, sir?
Clarification. Our approval can't come until after a successful in wetlands and water closure.
Absolutely correct, sir.
And so we cannot close on that until you've received that.
That's correct.
So I just wanted that on the record.
It's on the record and well-understood. Now, our application has been both prepared and reviewed by a number of well-known experts who we will be hearing from shortly. We propose to develop this property in a sustainable manner, incorporating good planning, smart growth concepts, and low-impact development practices. Our site is adjacent to, and accessed, as I noted, from West Putnam. It's situated on an urban corridor with public transportation, and it's also close to downtown and the train station. It's not immediately downtown, but it's within a mile. The site's well-suited for the vision of safe, quality, affordable housing in a diverse and economically-mixed community. It's unique in another respect. To the best of our knowledge, and I have looked fairly carefully, it's the only location in Greenwich where an RA1 zone immediately abuts without transition, a general-business zone. As such, we believe that our application provides an acceptable and quality transition as between the two. As an added benefit, the result, this proposal, if approved, in whatever its final configuration, will result in the relocation of a non-conforming industrial use off the property, and the environmental remediation of the property to residential standards in order to comply with all applicable law. Now, tonight, you're going to hear from and receive reports from a number of experts. I'm going to give you their names, and I'm going to also present their CVs, and then they will provide to you the substantive component of what our application is all about. Ted Hart is a licensed professional engineer. He's a principal of the firm of Mylon McRoom with Connecticut offices in Cheshire. Ted's going to describe the site in detail, also provide details as to the site plan. He's also going to have Ted Tom Knowlton, who's a PE also with the same firm, discuss sanitary sewers, two issues that I know you'd be concerned about. We also have tonight Ray Sullivan, a well-known licensed architect with an office in Fairfield. He's going to discuss the design and architecture of the building in question. We have Joseph Rustig, a former state fire marshal, who's going to talk about the fire proposal. He's present, he has a report, and he's going to submit himself to any questions you may have. I would also note, just perhaps as a quick preview, the building would be entirely sprinkled. Not that that answers all questions, but I wanted to make that clear to you. David Sullivan, our traffic engineer, unfortunately could not be with us tonight, and his report is going to be part of the record. He will be available for future meetings. We know the importance of traffic. Unfortunately, events prevented him from being here. Before we hear about the site plan and the architecture from Ted and about the, and from Ray, since two acres of the property have been historically used as an industrial usage, we've heard a great deal informally and at wetlands regarding concerns about the environmental. So to some degree, out of sequence for a planning and zoning presentation, we have, we would like to address those concerns, just to have a proper environment, no pun intended, in terms of the overall situation that exists on the site. We have retained, both historically and also for upgrades, the firm of Triton Environmental out of Guilford, and we have tonight both Chris Marchesi, senior principal and president of the company, and Carver Gleason, the assigned LEP. And what I would like to do is to let them spend a few minutes in taking you through, A, what's there, B, what was, what is proposed, and at the end of the day, the comfort level they have with the developable capacity of this site for the project that you're going to evaluate. So with your permission, I will turn it over at this point to Mr. Gleason.
Yeah, I was just wondering, do you think that we could alter the order in which we hear things, or do you want to follow their proposal? What do you guys think? You want to hear it in that the order proposed? Okay.
I think we're going to move to the side, since there's a flash drive element of this.
My name is Carver Gleason. I'm the senior vice president at Triton Environmental, Inc. I'm also a licensed environmental professional. I have been in the environmental consulting business for about 23 years. Triton was established in 1996, and the main focus of our work, and my work in particular, is the investigation or remediation of properties in Connecticut. And the vast majority of those happen to be industrial properties, and a significant portion of that work involves redevelopment. And a lot of times, that means redevelopment into a residential use. I would say that over the course of my career, I probably worked on hundreds of these redevelopment projects, many of which have very complex environmental issues, much more complex than I think what you're going to hear about tonight. So, you know, I feel, as I'll outline, and we go through the various stages of the environmental investigation, very comfortable that this, this property can be remediated to a residential standard, it can be done safely, and in a way that is protective of the neighbors. So I thought we could walk through the process of the environmental investigation. And for those who can't see the board, it's also up on the screen here what I'll be going over. The first phase of environmental investigation is called a Phase 1 Site Assessment. That's where you don't do any testing, but you do a site inspection of the property, you review the history, you review the site operations, you review regulatory files, local, state, and federal files, and you develop a list of what are called in the industry areas of concern, or AOCs. Excuse me. We did an initial Phase 1 Site Assessment of the former parcels that were involved in the Tollgate application, actually, a greater number of parcels than what's before you today, in 2012. But due to the age of that document, we are currently preparing an updated Phase 1 Environmental Site Assessment. That document is being finalized, and it should be available by, you know, mid-April. We have a deadline we agreed to with Wetlands to have that document available by, on or about the 18th of the month.
I'm sorry, sir. I have, your Phase 1 is October 2007?
I believe it's January 2012.
Okay. It says Phase 1 Environmental Site Assessment, Paint Environmental LLC, October 2007 in our materials.
Yeah, that's actually a report prepared by another firm.
Okay.
We're Triton Environmental. That was done before we became involved.
Okay.
So our first Phase 1 report was actually done in January 2012.
Okay. Excuse me, just for the record, on page 348 of the agenda is the document that the gentleman's referring to.
Okay, got it.
So this, this updated Phase 1 really establishes kind of the baseline for the next phases of the testing, the Phase 2 and the Phase 3, which I'll go over now. A Phase 2 Site Assessment is the initial testing phase on a property. It's where you try to determine the presence or absence of contamination in soil and in the groundwater. We did some initial Phase 2 testing in January 2012. That work involved 18 initial soil boreings, the installation and sampling of two... boreings, the installation and sampling of two bedrock groundwater monitoring wells. The testing did identify some soil contamination in two locations that exceeded cleanup standards in Connecticut, and in particular, we apply the residential standards because that was the proposed end-use. It also identifies some lower-level contamination below cleanup standards, but indicative of some degree of impact.
Excuse me, I just wanted, for clarification, did you recently acquire a piece of property for this project, so it would be subsequent to the 2012 assessment?
I guess I don't know the answer to that. My understanding was the overall Phase One Site Assessment was done in 2012, included, I think, nine parcels of land. This current proposal, sorry.
There's been no acquisition of any new properties. The properties before you are and have been owned by the family for years and years and years.
So, the site plan, or this application, is a smaller footprint than what was previously before the town. So, the original Phase One incorporated other land that's not before you today.
Was your original Phase One broken out by parcel?
The original Phase Two focused on the post-road ironworks, the 345 West Putnam Avenue.
Right, now, you said the Phase One.
Yes, we described all the different parcels of land that it included. Yep. And back to the results of the initial Phase Two in 2012, the groundwater sampling that was done then did not indicate any contamination above cleanup standards in the groundwater at the site, which is important. But again, it did identify some soil impacts. It's not surprising this site has a 90-plus-year history of industrial use. This is kind of par for the course for this kind of property. The next phase, which is step three on this slide, is the Phase Three Environmental Site Assessment, and that's what we're currently undertaking. A Phase Three is the delineation, the determination of the degree, the horizontal and vertical extent of the impact in soil and in groundwater. So, that work is currently being completed. And thus far, just to give you an idea of the scope of the Phase Three, we've advanced 114 additional soil boreings. We've installed and sampled four additional groundwater monitoring wells, and we've collected three sediment samples. Chris, if you want to... Now, this might be hard for the public to see, but each one of the blue dots and the yellow triangles on that site plan indicate a testing location. So, you can see, just by the density of those blue dots, kind of the magnitude of the testing that's currently underway. This data that's coming in now, we don't have a report yet, but we're sizing up all of this analytical data. This will formulate the Phase Three Environmental Site Assessment Report, which will also provide the basis upon which we determine the need for remediation. And again, we're going to compare the data both to residential standards, which is the proposed end-use, and industrial commercial standards, which is the current use. But obviously, the remedial plan for this project will be to clean up to residential standards.
Do any of these boreings go below the existing buildings?
Yes.
So, you've gone through the slab?
Yes.
Okay.
Could you just point out where the ironworks is on this?
Maybe you could just bring that over to Mr. Levy. Take the mic with you and bring that over. Yeah, oh, that even better. To Mr. Levy. He wanted to see where the boreings were for the, under the initial, the existing factory building.
I'll do it.
I get the area.
Yeah, so the main painting building is on the eastern side of the site. The fabrication building's kind of in the southeast corner, and they have a maintenance building on the western side of their operation. And you can see, we've also tested around the residence at 37 Oak as well.
The difference between red and blue, again, is what?
The red are groundwater monitoring wells, and the blue are soil boreings. And the kind of orangey-yellow triangles are superficial soil samples. So, just, you know, the main takeaway is that we're undertaking a very extensive investigation right now. And coming out of this data collection effort is going to be a report that will provide the reader with an understanding of where contamination is, where it's not, and then a companion document to that will be step four here, what's called a remedial action plan. That document will outline how we're going to clean up the site. It'll say, you know, in this case, it's going to be soil excavation. The good news is that groundwater is not contaminated, doesn't need to be remediated. It's just a soil issue. In addition to the remedial action plan, we also are going to be developing a soil management plan, which during construction, after remediation is complete, but during the construction of the site, how will soils be managed? How will they be characterized? What will happen to them? Where will they be taken? That'll be another document that will be developed.
Do you have any sense yet of the magnitude of the removal of soil from the property?
And what is the extent of the plume?
Right now, we're still collecting the data. We don't have, say, the number of cubic yards of soil. There is no plume that we're finding in the groundwater, but the soil, we will come up with that number, but we just don't have that yet.
When do you think that will be available?
That report, we're targeting April 18th for that. There's also several buildings on the property. They need to be properly assessed before they're demolished, just like any demolition project. So, there'll have to be a building demolition survey. If there's asbestos or lead paint, that'll have to be abated, like in the normal course of a demolition project. And then, you're into site remediation. What we're seeing right now is that the issue is shallow, there's only two to three feet of soil at this property, and then you hit bedrock. So, the soil remediation is going to be shallow excavations, two to three feet deep, down to the top of bedrock. That soil will be taken off the property. There'll be testing conducted to make sure it's all removed. And it's really a fairly straightforward approach. We've done this on many sites, and it's easily implemented. During the remediation, we'll also be putting in place controls to mitigate against potential sediment movement into nearby wetlands or dust movement off the site. And that's really, in a nutshell, I'm happy to entertain questions about what we know and where we're going. But I just, you know, at the conclusion, I'd like to stress that this site, although it does have impacts from its historical industrial use, it's really straightforward in terms of remediation. It can be done. It's definable, and it can be done safely.
How does one decide when soil is removed versus when a site is capped, and what happens if a site is capped as it relates to having residential on that property versus removal of the soil?
Yeah, for this site, the decision's kind of easy because the nature of the building is going to indicate that all the soil, the majority of the soil, will be excavated off the property anyway for construction of the garage. So, the soil is going to be leaving the property anyway, just as a construction matter. So, there really isn't the opportunity to cap in place. But that's certainly allowable within the regulations to leave it under a parking garage, for example. It's not accessible to human exposure at that point.
Are you, sorry.
Go ahead.
Just wanted to know, you're working with the DEC?
No, this is not, this site is not subject to any of the DEEP's regulations. We're doing this as, I'm doing it as an LEP, and consistent with their regulations, but we're not subject to them.
As to the garage, will you be in rock excavation for the whole garage?
Yeah, I'll leave that one to the PE who's working on the plan. I'm sure Ted can address that one. He's talking to you. I think the answer is yes, for the most part, but I don't want to comment.
Just as a follow-up to the prior question. So, there's no permitting required through the state DEEP for this type of remediation, so there's no state permitting required? So, who monitors, who reviews the remediation plan?
The LEP would, which would be me.
Oh, okay. Okay. Isn't there a report filed with DEEP?
Yeah, the, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
I mean, I had my own property. I had an oil take removed and so forth, and that was a tiny piece of territory, but there certainly was a report.
Yeah, underground storage tanks are regulated by the DEEP, so anytime you remove a tank, that has to be, a report has to be submitted. A remediation project, where the site is not subject to the Connecticut Transfer Act and not subject to a consent order by the DEEP, private parties are left to themselves to conduct remediation voluntarily, which this would be. And just to give you a little background on the LEP program, professionals are licensed by the state to essentially become their arm in completing these projects. So, we have to, we have to kind of implement their regulations in lieu of the state doing it.
For the record, could you just tell us what an LEP is?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Licensed Environmental Professional. So, you have to have requisite years of experience. You have to sit for an exam, and you have to renew your application with continuing education.
Effectively, what you're saying is the state determines standards, and then you do testing of a property and determine whether or not the site does or does not meet those standards, and you would certify to that data effectively?
That's exactly right.
So, if you're within a certain standard, then you can proceed one way, and if you're not, then you proceed another way. Is that a fair summary?
That's a fair way to sum it up.
Okay. Just a question. As you described the hydrology of this site, well, how this site works, from an environmental point of view, you said there's a narrow soil, there's two, three feet of soil on the, and then it goes to rock. We have a notice of violation from 2012, and it was for paint spill, for paint contamination. So, it was liquid. Wondering what the potential for leaching would have been to the surrounding properties from this one, and how far you're going around this property to investigate this? Because right now, you've only been testing on-site. Are you, I know you've found no evidence in the groundwater, but that's on-site. Have you looked beyond the site to see if the contamination has spread?
Yeah, so, there's two ways for contaminants to become mobilized from contaminated soil that's at the surface. It can leach down into the groundwater.
Which you can't leach down in this case because it's hitting rock bed.
Well, the groundwater is in the rock.
But where it hits rock bed, it's going to follow a line that may not be on the property. I'm asking you the question because, from my own experience, contaminants have a way of turning up somewhere else, surprising sometimes. So, I'm just asking if you're doing that, if that's in your scope.
We are trying to delineate the extent of the contamination. In other words, define the clean edge, start in the middle where the contamination is, and work outward.
And so, you are going to look for, you're looking for the clean edges, and you will continue to move out, even if it means moving off property?
Yeah, now, we do not have access to certain offsite properties to do any testing.
I would expect that people would grant you access if...
If the data indicates that that situation is occurring, and again, we're, this is all happening real time, we don't have the answer to that question, so I don't know if that will be necessary.
I think there would be, there would be two questions. You've got a small murmur on. One is, to what extent are you considering it, having gone off property, and sort of the knock-on effect? And then, the other thing is, if the work that you do as an LEP has no third-party validation from, say, a municipality, I'd be interested in what other opportunities there are for us to validate that this soil, whether we could have our own people or hire experts. I think that would be the way to go, that at the end of the remediation process, that the town be able to verify that this is, in fact, safe for housing.
Yeah, I understand the concern. I think that actually the inland wetlands commission may have already retained an LEP.
I know they have retained an LEP. I don't, as far as I know, they are restricting that to their own jurisdiction of wetland. And here, we're asking you a far broader question, which is where the site itself, the development of the site itself, where the housing will be, you know, where the children will be playing, that's, they're not going to be in the wetland, hopefully. So, we're going to, we're looking, I'm sure you're a great guy.
I actually, I actually, I appreciate that, but I actually welcome the third-party LEP review. We, it's not something we shy away from. I think we can talk the same language. And so, I think that is certainly something you should consider.
My name is Chris Marchesi. I'm president of Triton Environmental. I just wanted to follow up on your question about, you talked about paint staining from contamination from the site.
David Stokes.
Yeah, from the report. He is from the Hazardous Waste Group and did an inspection and identified some methodologies that the site was not using and did not comply with at the time. The site then subsequently addressed those issues, and there was a letter issued from his department saying that they had gotten into compliance. But you had asked a broader question about contamination.
Historic. How long has this property, this has been, 90 years, 80 years, something like that?
Nearly 100 years, exactly.
And so, what happens is historically, that stuff just flows somewhere.
Right, so, that's exactly what I wanted to address. So, you've seen the extent of the boreings that we've done, and our job is to work out, as Carver had described, from the center of these identified spills, work out until we find the edges.
Find the clean edge. Gotcha.
All of our data today is showing that we are delineating those areas within the site boundaries. Furthermore, we installed bedrock monitoring wells. Carver mentioned those wells. Those are the larger red, up on this presentation board, those are the larger red circles. These are deep bedrock monitoring wells that go into the bedrock where we intersect the water table. The idea is to be able to pick up any kind of contaminants that have migrated, actually have migrated through the soil and into the groundwater, into the bedrock. And as Carver described, as of today, and we're pulling together the data, but we've seen a lot of it, we are not seeing contamination in the bedrock above the applicable standards. So, that's an indication that we have isolated impact to soils on-site, has not migrated off-site, and has not migrated into the groundwater that would then migrate off-site in excess of applicable residential standards for the site. Okay?
I had two follow-ups. I'm looking, I'm just looking at our staff report at page 72. So, the lead level and the PCB level is above accepted standards. Is that right?
That's right.
And it also said, says that the groundwater sampling vis-à-vis petroleum hydrocarbons is above acceptable standards, and it doesn't seem to indicate that that's caused by, it seems to be a site-based problem. Is that right?
Yeah, actually, that refers to, the very first time that the wells were sampled, some low concentrations of hydrocarbons were detected. We suspected that that was due to the drilling process, you know, that the whole, you know, gets disturbed during the drilling process. So, we went back and re-sampled them twice during the original 2012 Phase Two, and both of those samplings, the hydrocarbons went away. It was clean. We've now done, we're now re-sampling them again as a, you know, four years later to do another check on those, and we're seeing the same thing, that they're not detected.
The report proposes that there could be a title report done so as to assure ourselves that there aren't liens. Is that something the applicant is prepared to do?
We are doing that. It actually has been done as part of the updated Phase One Site Assessment. You'll see that.
Okay. And the, why would there be a deep notice of violation if DEEP doesn't regulate this?
That was the NOV that was being referred to. They do regulate hazardous waste operations at sites, not... They do regulate hazardous waste operations at sites, not necessarily cleanup or remediation on this particular site. But they do regulate how hazardous wastes are handled, where drums have to be stored, and that's what the notice of violation had to do with it.
That's what it pertained to, I see.
Coming back to the whole issue of the migration, our conservation director is asked that they be provided with the records from all the semi-annual inspections of the stormwater discharge that is required to be performed under the site's stormwater discharge industrial permit? So I'm just telling you that-
Yeah, the site does have a stormwater permit, and they do comply with that by doing the requisite sampling, which is twice per year and the inspections. And those results are at the DEEP, and we can also provide them.
Yes, so she was asking that they be provided to conservation for their review on what the results are?
We'll note that, and we can follow up, yes.
Thank you.
I have a quick question. Given the amount of soils and ledge that's being removed, just to be clear, there's no maximum or minimum in terms of the amount that gets removed without notification or to the state or anything like that?
No, the volume of the soil that's being removed does not trigger some kind of notification requirement. There are notification requirements if you find certain levels of contamination in the soil, and if we do identify that during the Phase II, of course, we'll do that, we'll follow the law. But in terms of excavating soil off a property, there's no kind of threshold value there.
So in a sense, similar to what you had said before, ma'am, a good portion of all of the topsoil is being removed, and it doesn't really matter, nobody will really know where that goes to?
Oh, no, that's not to say that, it's gonna be very well documented. I would not do a remediation project where we don't know where the soils are going, of course. So that will be in reports, reports will be submitted, the manifest will be submitted and know exactly where the soils went to.
It's a national issue.
But it's just, the distinction is that the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection will not be reviewing and approving the report.
With the ledge, it's actually going quite, quite deep down for that garage and all that stone that's coming up. I'm not too sure if this is a valid question, but would any of the stone or any of the fissures in the stone be considered hazardous if, over the course of 90 years, you said actually things have leached in but not reached the water table yet?
Yeah, so I'll answer that two ways. First, the soil that's overlying the bedrock will first be removed before any, any kind of blasting is undertaken, so the contaminants will be gone. The groundwater, which exists in the fissures of the rock today, that's what we're testing, and the testing's showing that there's just no contamination in the groundwater. So therefore, the rock that's coming out is not expected to be, have any contaminants on it at all.
What's the standard in your business for how many deep test holes should be on a site of this? I mean, what's your standard? How do you decide how many borings that you need to monitor groundwater?
There's, there's some guidance documents that are prepared by DEEP. One of them's called the Site Characterization Guidance Document. It outlines kind of in broad brush how they expect LEPs to go through these investigations. But in a sense, you start with the Phase 1, you go to the Phase 2, and if you identify impacts, you then have to chase those impacts essentially, until you get to a point where the concentrations no longer exceed any applicable standard. So the number of borings is often dictated by the amount of issues that you're investigating. So on some sites, it might be 20 borings and that's it, in some sites, it might be 200 borings, there's really no standard.
Could you raise that board? So I'm asking, you have a boring here, a boring up here, and here, and here, and here, but it seems like you have a very large gap there, and what standard are you, are you trying to fill, or why didn't you put one there?
Do you mind showing me that, too? Sorry, I don't look at it. Thank you.
So in our, in our business, there's something called a conceptual site model, and you, you first identify a concern. Let's say an underground storage tank is a concern. So you would investigate around that tank to see if there's a problem. If you're in a lawn of a residential property, there's no area of concern identified, it wouldn't dictate the need for a boring. So a lot of the white space you see there has not received sampling solely because an area of concern has not been identified in that location.
Just to follow up on that, you had pointed to the red circles on that, and some space in between that and the concentration of the blue locations, which are the borings. So as Carver described, the blue borings would kind of bracket an area of concern. The red wells, the bedrock wells, are different in nature, and if you'll, you'll see, they're actually on the periphery of the property largely, and that's because we're trying to pick up broadly across the site if there's any impacts that we might have missed from the individual borings that we did in the identified areas of concern. So they provide us a much larger area of observation than do the borings themselves.
And on that, what are the red triangles?
The orange triangles are superficial soil samples. So that was where there might be a paint stain or a petroleum stain, and very superficial on the surface, and we're trying to bracket those areas so we, we can draw a line around it, and we know what to excavate when it comes time to remediation.
Okay.
Can you explain the Transfer Act a little bit, and how that would impact the merger of land and remediation schedule?
Yeah, it's a good question. The Transfer Act is one of the primary regulatory drivers of cleanups in Connecticut, but it only applies to certain types of properties. And it only applies to properties that, that meet certain criteria, one of which is that 100 kilograms or more of hazardous waste has been generated at the site in any one month after November 1980. That's the one that, that pulls in the most amount of properties. As part of our updated Phase 1 site assessment that we'll be issuing shortly, we did a very careful analysis of all the different waste streams that they, that they have at this facility. So they have, they have xylans that they use to clean the paint material, they have waste paint that goes as overspray, and we did an analysis to calculate the volume of those wastes that are generated per month. And we came up with a number below the 100-kilogram threshold. And the facility also did not meet any of the other criteria, dry cleaner, a auto body repair shop. So in our opinion, the site, none of these parcels are subject to the Connecticut Transfer Act. And that'll be spelled out in our Phase 1 report.
And just to follow up on that, though, if you were subject to the Transfer Act, you would then be subject to what's called the Remediation Standard Regulations, which would govern the investigation and the cleanup of the site. We are moving ahead with the site, despite its not being an establishment or subject to the Transfer Act, we're moving ahead, subjecting our investigation and remediation to the Remediation Standard Regulations as if it was subject to the Transfer Act.
Is there a point where a site is contaminated so much that it can't be remediated for the purpose of residential use? Can you explain that a little bit?
Generally speaking, there's engineering solutions to almost all types of contamination, and even engineering solutions that could allow residential use. For example, the one that can be problematic for residential use is if high concentrations of volatile organic compounds are present, like gasoline or solvents that can create indoor, that can volatilize up into the building and create indoor air issues. We don't have any of that at this site. Otherwise, soil issues can generally be either excavated or capped, and even on a cap site, you can have a residential use. We're doing that in other municipalities in Fairfield County, a couple in Norwalk I'm working on now, and one in Stanford.
Was there a gas station next door to this property at one point?
There were down on West Putnam, at the corner of Oak Street and West Putnam, there was a historic gas station. So one of the, one of the reasons for installing these two bedrock groundwater monitoring wells, in addition to evaluating the potential for migration off of the property, is also to evaluate the potential of impact to the property from these, you know, the dealership property and the former gas station. And we're not showing any kind of gasoline-related contaminants in the groundwater.
Can you, can you put the outline back up again? A question about step number four, the action plan. Who reviews that action plan once it's developed?
In this circumstance, where the DEEP is not in a regulatory role, that can be provided to the town as part of your review process, it can be provided to Inland Wetlands, there could be, if, you know, the stakeholders feel it necessary, there could be third-party reviewers. But there's no regulatory agency at the state level that needs to review and approve it.
So I think the answer to that would be that since we're asking for a, if you will, third-party LEP to evaluate the final remediation, that we would also, we would also be involved in reviewing the remediation plan when it is developed? That that would be, so it would be both the plan and the results?
Well, I think also the assessments as well.
Well, yeah, but Denise has, they have all the assessments right now. Denise is commenting on the, our conservation department's commenting, everybody's got the assessments to date, and you're supplying them, I believe.
Well, we'll be supplying a brand-new, up-to-date Phase 1 envi, Phase 1-
Oh, yeah, redo Phase 1, right.
Completely redone to fully characterize the sites, and time has passed from, from the last one.
Got it.
We're also doing an updated Phase 2 and a Phase 3.
Okay.
That, that makes up all the borings and wells that you've seen in those drawings.
And that's all, what you're gonna finish by April 18?
Yes.
And provide to-
Well, it was committed to the Wetlands Commission, but it'll become available, yes.
You give it to Wetlands into planning and zoning, and then we would distribute it to the relevant experts.
Yes. One other, just to follow up on his question about the remedial action plan. That's also a document for us as the environmental consultants and engineers to work through and develop a well-thought-out plan on how to remediate the site. So it acts as a cookbook for us when we're implementing the actual remediation, so we can go back to it, our contractors can go back to it. So it's not just a piece of paper that somebody looks at and approves, it's actually a working document that gets used and adhered to throughout the remediation process.
The soil management plan itself, that's inclusive of soils being brought back to the site as well, and the ledge that's being removed?
It would, it would address any soils coming onto the site. There's a protocol where we would implement testing of any soils that would be brought as fill. I don't think there's gonna be a whole lot of that, this is a significant excavation off the property, so the amount of import should be minimal, maybe, you know, crushed stone materials for construction purposes. But if there are to be soils brought in as fill, the soil management plan would outline a protocol on how to evaluate and test that material.
Oh, that reminds me, as part of the site development, the plan is to crush stone on-site and reuse, and use it on, and keep it for reuse on-site. At least that's how I understood the site development plan. As that is implemented, would you go in and retest where there has been stone crushed, removed, and see that the soil is still clean?
Um, there's, the-
I mean, there's a tricky part to this, 'cause you remediate, and then they're gonna come in and do stone. There's a lot, because there's some outcroppings there that I believe are, right, they're going away, right? So what happens when those get removed, and do you go in and retest and evaluate that again, the soil is still clean?
Okay, well, the soil will be removed first as part of the remediation, and then additional soil will be removed for construction before you get to the bedrock. So when the bedrock is being blasted, there's, the soil has been stripped off there. The rock itself is an inert material.
That has, may have water, that may have some water filtration in it, I mean, you don't know the answer to what's inside those rock structures.
Well, we do, the bedrock wells tell us what's in the, the nature of the groundwater that's moving in the fractures of the rock, and that, that's showing that there's no, the contaminants are not there.
So your, your operating assumption is we've done the cleanup, we're good, when you go in to break the bedrock, there should be nothing else?
Yes, that's right.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Is this yours or mine?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I have two housekeeping items. I have the CVs, files of the respective people who have testified before you tonight, including Mr. Marchese and Mr. Carver Gleason. I can give them all to Mr. Luca. I also have a written confirmation of the extension request, which, again, I would give to her. With those two done, I'd like to request that we have Theodore Hart, Ted Hart of Malona McBroom, speak to you on the project itself.
What difference does it make, we'll be here to hear it all. Okay.
Good evening. My name is Ted Hart. I'm a professional engineer at Malona McBroom. My full name is Edward, not Theodore, but I go by Ted. I have 34 years of experience, I'm a vice president of Malona McBroom. We have 150 employees, most of them based in our, let me see.
Yeah.
I'm a professional engineer, and I'm a vice president at Malona McBroom. And we have 150 employees, most of them based in our corporate office in Cheshire, Connecticut. We also have several other satellite offices throughout New England. We're here on behalf of Post Road Iron Works at 345 West Putnam Avenue. What I have in front of you is an aerial photograph, and I'm outlining the property. Outline the property in yellow, this odd-shaped piece of property, that's five acres. It's located north of West Putnam Avenue, and Oak Street is located on the west side of the property, and Hemlock Drive is located to the north of the property. The zone is RA1, the bulk of the property is RA1. The two fingers of property that basically stretch out to West Putnam Avenue are in the GB zone. So you've already heard that Post Road Iron Works, it makes structural and ornamental metalwork, gates, fences, railings, things like that. There's also a single-family house at 37 Oak Street, right here. The existing buildings and paved areas amount to 1.86 acres of impervious coverage on the site as it exists today. Most of it is located in the southeast area, in this area where Post Road Iron Works building is, the main building, and they also have some paved parking areas where they also store steel for their, their work. The impervious coverage that we've identified, the 1.86 acres, does not include numerous rock outcrops throughout the site, basically all through the site, especially just to the left of the entrance drive, there's kind of a rock knob area. Based on soil testing performed by Nobus, a geotechnical engineering firm that we've hired, we've found that there's a thin layer of soil, just as Triton said, there's a thin layer of soil over the ledge. layer of soil over the ledge. We will, we hope to have their report later this week and we will be providing that both to Wetlands and to planning and zoning. So we have also reviewed the previous borings on-site prepared by GeoDesign that were done for the Tollgate project. And we've also been looking at what Triton's been doing with their borings. And basically, we found that, you know, there's very thin layer of soil in this area, thin layer of soil here on this, this is where the emergency access road out to Oak Street is going. It's a little bit deeper, it's maybe five feet, but in a lot of these other areas, it's one, two, three feet deep and that's it, until you hit ledge. Let me just... This is just an illustration of the existing conditions, showing the buildings on-site in brown and the gray area is the paved area on-site. We didn't calculate these little pieces, but these are all rock outcrops that were picked up by the surveyors. So you can see there's little pieces all around the site and it's basically indicative of a very thin soil layer over the rock. This illustration I have here is our site plan for the building. It shows the two access points from West Putnam Avenue. This is the western access is an ingress only and it comes straight into the mid-level of the parking garage. The eastern, or the, yeah, the eastern driveway is two-way and it comes into, closer to the lower-level entrance, which is to the right of the central access point to the garage. Ray Sullivan, the architect, will explain a little bit more about how the garages work. But basically, there is a lower level that is about two-thirds of the building footprint and then the mid-level garage that comes in at the middle of the building is the entire footprint of the building. And then the left entrance, or the western entrance into the garage, is to an upper level, which is basically just half of the building.
Are you the person to ask, why was the number 355 units selected for this property?
Not really. That may be the architect or the, you know, the applicant himself, so. But anyway...
Do you want us to comment on the ingress and the egress at this time? Would this be...
Let me go just a little bit further about that and then, you know, one minute, okay? So we have, we also have circulation around the entire building with emergency access to Oak Street. There's a gate at both ends of the emergency access here and here. Oops, sorry. So anyway, that's the circulation around the building. So we have basically access to all three sides of the building. The emergency access, we are going to change the, right now, it's shown here as a porous asphalt, but we're going to be changing that to a grass paver system. It was brought up by the chairman of Wetlands. He asked if that could be a different, like a grass surface, and it can be, so we are going to go with a grass surface.
Will that support fire trucks?
Yes. We have a, I'll give you information on it. It's a grass pave two system. Basically, it's a, it's plastic rings that are embedded in the...
Yes, I've seen it.
Okay. We also have a sidewalk along the emergency access that goes down to Oak Street and that sidewalk is specifically for a school bus stop on Oak Street. We intend to have schoolchildren picked up on Oak Street instead of right out on Route One. So with that, I'll answer your questions on circulation.
Go ahead. Anybody else? Nick, anybody? I've been talking a lot. Well, one of the first questions that we pondered is this issue of the limited ingress/egress given the number of units. Our traffic consultant did not have, when they analyzed it, the bedroom distribution. You had given just the number of apartments. But one of the questions that, given what happens at peak hours, is do you, what, where's your queuing capacity as people exit the site? What happens to the queuing? I couldn't find anything like that. I don't know whether I missed it in the traffic analysis, but how far do people go at peak hours down those driveways and how long does it take them, that one, and how long does it take people to get out, to go to work in the morning, for example, if you have, the morning count was 180? 180?
All I can tell you is that this intersection here operates at a level of service B, which is totally acceptable. I don't have, I'm sorry, our traffic engineer wasn't able to come tonight, but I did talk to him about, you know, queuing problems and he said there's no queuing problems there.
Is that level of B with the traffic signal?
Yes.
Or without?
With the traffic signal.
So without, it's what?
I don't think we analyzed it that way.
And when you are looking at the level of service, did you look at it on the, what the flow on the driveway was as well or were you just looking at West Putnam?
No, basically, it means how long it takes, how long do they wait here to make their move?
Okay, so you're not looking at whether or not people are going to get slowed down coming across West Putnam as there is egress from the building because the, you've got deterioration in several surrounding intersections to level of service D and E.
Well, yes. But this, just speaking of this, this is going to be analyzed, you know, as a traffic signal, so everybody is moving with the light, you know, they're not going to...
Will there be left turns in this signal?
Yes, yes, there will be. This is the, this is left turn in and, you know, right turn in also.
Down to the other intersection, which will not be signalized, do you see any backup on Putnam Avenue for left turns into the site?
You know what? I'd have to defer to our traffic engineer on that because I don't have that information.
Okay. And your traffic engineer is here tonight or not?
He's not.
Oh, that's right, that was the person who got stuck. Okay.
Sorry.
So we'll hold those questions for the next time. We have a lot of them.
The final report that I saw indicated that there were 11 intersections analyzed.
Yes.
And nine of the 11 operated at D or better. And I realize this is an 830G project, but the, let me get your comment anyway, that the town of Greenwich has a standard of Level C.
Right.
Now, Level D was pointed out in your traffic survey as being adequate for an urban environment. I don't think most of the people who live in Greenwich would think of us as an urban environment, so what is the difference between, I don't know what the next one is, is it suburban?
I'm not sure about that, but I think that was just a comment, you know, based on...
It sounded like a very technical comment.
Okay.
Because it got used as being satisfactory for this kind of an environment. If we're not an urban environment, then is it satisfactory for our environment?
I believe also that we haven't degraded the level of service at these intersections. We, there's one that went from a D to an E and it can be rectified by changing the timing of the traffic signal.
I think our DPW department did not agree with you on that.
Yeah, and neither did our traffic consultant.
Have you...
Okay, I...
Is this a situation where this is not your...
It's not my expertise, right.
I think we have...
You can pass these questions on.
I will. Thank you.
Just on another whole, so obviously, we have the level of service issues. One of the questions that, if you guys could pass this on to the traffic person for the next time, our own traffic consultant raised that they thought that perhaps you should explore different access plans that might improve the overall level of safety in this corridor because the actual accident incidents in this corridor at present is fairly high and it is, there's a term for it being high, that it's a SLOSS, Suggested List of Surveillance Study Site, so it's a high enough...
That's a DMT.
Yep, again, you know, we drill down, pick up the stuff. So because of the accident rate in this corridor, they were raising the question of whether this access, this was going to work and whether you could look at safer alternatives. The other thing is, of course, what you guys know and that we would want you to comment on again, is that because this is, Mrs. Raymer, you were making this point yesterday that this is a major traffic generator under the State Traffic Authority definitions? And so we would want you to address what the repercussions are for our community of that, so that's the second thing. Do I, I'm just going to go ahead and tell you all the traffic issues.
That's fine, yep.
The truck, the trucks maneuvering on-site, our consultant and our, and our in-house engineers were not clear how that was going to work.
We are addressing that now. We've run auto turn for the fire truck, for SU30, which is a 30-foot truck, WB50, which is a big tractor-trailer.
We're going to ask you all the questions when...
We'll have that information for you.
There...
Can I expand on that just a little bit?
Yeah, sure.
The other, the other point that was being raised is the loading dock in that area.
Yes, exactly. So how does, how does...
How does it work?
How does it work?
Yep. Well, I can tell you right now with the, the biggest thing for, you know, an apartment building like this is, say, a moving van or something coming in and, you know, when somebody has furniture or whatever, they're moving things in. The route is they come in and they park right along here. That's why we have this area that is, you know, basically paved right up to the building. That's their parking area and they can, they can basically come in, I think they come in this way actually, and they park right here and then they can go back out.
So they do have to violate the lane, the opposing lane?
They will. They will.
Is that common for this...
For a driveway, yes. Yep.
For this magnitude of development?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Okay.
Can you show us other instances?
Yeah, maybe you guys better show us, yeah. Good idea.
I'll have to get that for you. We, I don't have the truck turning movements right now, but I know we've run all of them. The SU30 has to come in here, the garbage truck basically, and pick up here and also pick up back here.
But that exit was only for emergency access?
This, this is all the way to here is basically for vehicular access.
And then how do they turn around?
That was one of the questions Beto was asking. Yeah, and that, that's one of the questions, exactly what Mr. Fox just asked, our consultant was asking that. The access from the surface parking to the building, they didn't, they wanted to know what your surface parking was for.
Right.
Because it doesn't have great access to the building.
Let me just, let's just take a second here. As you come into this central area, there's a large, well, there's a visitor parking area right inside. And there's also handicap parking throughout the different levels of the parking garage located near the elevators. So this is basically overflow parking, you know, it's not for handicap parking or anything like that, so it's just an additional parking area.
And how did you come up with that? Why do you need the additional parking?
Because you're under...
We were just trying to meet a parking ratio of about 1.5 per unit.
So it's not really overflow parking because our regulations would require 662 spaces, Katie?
718.
718, sorry, where did I get the...
Because you're providing spaces right now for 532.
Thirty-two or 35, I can't remember.
Well, I don't know, but I have, close enough.
Yes.
559, yeah.
My point being that you're basing it on 1.5 cars per apartment, which is below the town standard. Now, the, a problem is this site is landlocked.
Yes.
There is nowhere to overflow unless it gets back into residential streets and so forth to have any kind of safety factor. If the town is right, it meets standards and you're wrong. So how did you come up with, what is the mechanism or what is the standard that you've used to justify one and a half per apartment?
We can provide that to you. We've done a lot of traffic parking studies and we will give that to you. So, that's all I can say for right now, but 1.5 is generally considered a safe apartment.
Is that another one of these urban characteristics?
No, I don't think it's urban, it's just for apartments.
And, you know, we typically do it in terms of bedrooms, you're doing it in terms of apartments, that was something new to us. Richard, I've got here that they're providing 664 total.
Is that a state standard that you, this 1.5?
No.
What is it exactly?
I believe it comes from the Institute of Traffic Engineers, ITE.
1.6.
They do, they do, studies of parking requirements and things. And we've done our own too, so.
I always check.
We'll get that for you.
Okay, thank you.
Are there other instances in the state where that ratio has been used that you could provide us so that, we'd like to understand the type of building that you've applied that ratio and be able to take a look at that?
Okay.
And especially a building of this size?
Yes.
The, the other comment is that you haven't specified handicap parking areas?
They're inside. You have to look at the architectural drawings, they're all laid out in the architectural drawings.
They are shown, but it doesn't appear that you have enough of them. And they're also not dimensioned. One of them actually looks rather small, it's, I think, I forget, I think it was on the lower level near the lobby.
Okay, well, we'll have to...
But I don't think you have enough. I did ask the building official and he indicated that it was 2%, 2% of the number of parking spaces, if I recall correctly.
Katie, there was a formula in your report.
Yes, I'm trying to remember.
It was 12 spaces.
Our traffic analysis spoke of the Office of State Traffic Authority, OSTA, and that it was required for the project because it would be classified as a major traffic generator by that office. Has that dialogue started?
I'm not sure if it has started yet or not. I know that OSTA does not get involved until the Planning and Zoning Commission has made their decision because they do not want to get into the local approval processes.
As part of that review, though, you'd actually be talking to OSTA about the traffic light and its impact on state road.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So then in a sense, actually, we have to, we go through our process before we actually start to talk about that traffic light in your entrances.
Could you tell us what the distance is from that overflow parking to the main entrance? Or is there an entrance that's closer?
There's an entrance right here.
Okay.
And there's, there's elevators in this corner of the building also.
Well, I'm assuming that for security purposes, that you must want people, I mean, I don't know who's in the overflow parking, I guess the visitor parking is full, but I'm sure they're not going to be permitted access to any of these corners of the building, are they?
If they're residents, yes.
Oh, if they're residents?
Yes.
But a visitor or something?
Visitors come in the main entrance.
I understand, it's full.
What's that?
It's full. Where do they go?
Well, I think they would have to come in and talk to somebody. If they're a visitor, they would be coming into the leasing office and they would have to be given access to some kind of parking space.
Let me just ask the question again. I am assuming that, again, around the building where you do have multiple entrance or doors, those would all be a secure door.
Yes.
And if you're a resident, yes, you could, you could get in with a key or card or something, but someone else couldn't.
Right.
So they would then, if they were parked in this lot, how far do they have to walk to get back to the front door? Because they can't, they're not a resident, so how far do they have to walk?
This is approximately 300 feet here.
That's a football field.
Yep.
Quickly back to the handicap parking spaces. I counted eight that are proposed and I believe 12 are required according to the, to the building code. It's space, it states that between 500 and 1,000 spaces require 2% to be handicap accessible, so that would, that would be 12.
Okay. I will, I will check that with the architect.
Thank you.
We'll provide the required handicap spaces.
And just generally, just the, the kind of comments on accessibility under the ADA, it kept coming up in places regarding your, your whole traffic issue, sidewalk width, curb ramps, again, the designation of the handicap spots. It would seem a contradiction in terms that you make an affordable, affordable building and that you don't comply completely with ADA.
We will be complying.
Okay.
We will be.
So are the parking spaces assigned to the units or will people have to?
No, I don't believe they are assigned.
So how, has there been an analysis as to how many open spaces you suspect there will be and in which area?
That, that's part of our, of our traffic, I mean, I'm not, I don't think we've figured out which areas, but overall, we, we have done analyses to see what the demand, parking demands are on these type of buildings, so we can, we can give that to you.
I mean, the obvious human nature is that people are going to want to park this.
Where it's dry.
You know, closest and undercover and whatnot, so.
Sure, I think everybody will try to park inside.
Right. So how will that impact the internal circulation? If that's full, then you go to present the second best option and then the third best option, et cetera. So how does, how does that impact things? It would be interesting to hear how you've analyzed that.
Okay.
On this project, the adequacy of outdoor space for the residents is being satisfied by balconies.
Balconies.
And two interior courts.
Right.
It seems rather small amount of area to be provided for 355 units. Can you tell me what standards or exactly how did that come up to the number or is it just what was left over?
Maybe the architect can, can provide some clarification to that. I mean, we, we looked at the, the courtyards and tried to, you know, make those as big as possible. There, it's about, between the two of them, it's about a half an acre planned, so. And that's all I can say about that. I mean, it's, it is.
It doesn't, it doesn't count for very much if you divide it by 355 dwelling units, so it's a, per dwelling unit, it's kind of small.
Well, and it's also with very high building around, it's a courtyard.
Mm-hmm.
So in the winter, you're going to have limited hours of sunshine.
Even in the summer.
And you're going to have a, a building full of children, apparently.
Usually apartment buildings do not have too many children. I know that I did a apartment building in, in Norwalk with 250 apartments right on the, the Norwalk, the Westport-Norwalk line, and I went back two years later and they had a handful of school-aged children and they, none of them went to the schools, you know, but they had very few.
Well, we've actually been told that 830G, that under the affordable, under the affordable standards, there is, I forget where it is, but we have a report that gives us an estimate. I thought it was from them.
51 children.
51 children.
51 children.
Yeah.
And one of the sentences in there that is that you can expect more children.
I didn't see that.
In an affordable, okay, I'll find it and.
Because the, the layout of those courts doesn't provide any outdoor space for children, at least as I could see from the, it just may be in a graphic representation, but.
It is.
I think that that's what, it needs to be addressed. Two, the pool itself, is that a deep pool or is it shallow?
It's, it's generally shallow. I think it's a four-foot to five-foot deep at the most. It's generally a shallow pool.
Does it work with the garage?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, there's, there's a.
If.
If you look at the architectural, there's a, basically a footprint of the pool in the.
This is a memo that went to Peter Carriero, Post Road Iron Works, dated March 10th, 2016. It says typically affordable housing units generate more public schoolchildren than market units, market rate units. So we're assuming.
That's the analysis they, they did. They did an analysis for the market rate and an analysis for the affordable.
No, they were giving us total number of children.
Right, but they, I think they broke it down.
But what they're saying is that if, since we're doing 830G, that we can expect children.
Yes, yep, you can.
So in, in the pool, where are the chemicals stored?
I know that they have several, I mean, that's something for the architect probably, but I know that they do have maintenance, uh, built, rooms and built into this building, so they'll probably be in one of the maintenance rooms.
Where would the pool equipment be?
I'll have to leave that to the architect, I'm not sure exactly where they, where that's going.
You're the, you did the site planning?
Yes.
And typically, what's the buffer for between, in a residential zone, between a seven-story building and a single-family house in your experience?
Well, it all depends.
In a non-urban environment?
Well, in an urban environment.
We're not in urban.
It, it varies. I mean, some, some places you get to 30 feet, 20 feet. I mean, that's.
Can you be specific?
In New York City, maybe.
Oh, yeah, I mean, you know, in a, in a more urban environment, you get.
We're not, wait, do we have to tell you four times we're not urban? I, I don't, it's, it's not a joke.
I think what Mr. Fox is saying is we have no building in town of this height, none. There is no building this tall in town or of this square footage. Just, there isn't, it doesn't exist. So when we're asking you about something that Mr. Fox was asking you, like the buffer, go ahead.
And, you know, if you look at the single-family to the west side of the property, I know we've asked for a solar analysis, but that house is going to be shadowed by this building. And from a low-impact development, I don't know how you can make a representation that it's low-impact development. You're disturbing 100% of the site.
But.
And, and, and so I just trying to understand the balance between the number of units, the low-impact development, the ability, the impact on the surrounding neighborhood from your position as a, a site planner.
Well, I think as far as the low-impact development goes, we, we use low-impact development techniques on the site. We have a green roof, we have porous pavement and things like that. We've reduced the overall impervious coverage, we're, we're less than the 1.86 that is there now. All of this green here is, is the green roof.
You're saying on the existing site, you have 80% coverage?
We have 1.86 acres of impervious coverage, yeah.
Right, on a five-acre site.
Right.
And now how much impervious coverage on a five-acre site? It's not the same.
78%.
Yeah, 80%.
You, you are currently removing from the site 206 trees, all of them exceeding six inches in diameter. The planting plan that you're showing on this site plan is a woeful replacement for that number of trees. It just has not, it's not even close to a replacement. Now, how do you justify that as a living environment for people?
Well, it's, it's really the building that is their, their living environment.
Well, are they going to enjoy what, fresh air if they're in their apartment? Is that it? Could they go walk around their apartment to walk? I mean, it's.
Well, they can go to town parks and things like that, I mean, it's.
So in other words, this, this site is, is not, is not providing the necessary facilities for that kind of outdoor recreation? Because as has been spoken, in winter, if that courtyard is, is snowed in, then you're almost down to zero because the balconies are.
Right, it's, it's the balconies or the courtyard is the, the outside space.
As the site plan person, are you the person, we're going to ask questions regarding the drainage plan and the sewer issues?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I have somebody else here to talk about the sewers.
Okay, so we would just do drainage.
Before Mr. Hart steps away.
Yeah, yeah, no, and, and he's got, he does, he does drainage, so.
I haven't gone through all my presentations, so I.
Yeah, yeah, okay, go ahead, sorry.
It's my understanding that a shadow analysis is going to be done?
Yes.
Would that be supplied to us as well?
Sure.
And I, I have a question concerning low-impact development. When does the low-impact development take place? Is this, this is after the site has been cleared, all of the soils have been removed and we're digging out three, three levels of garage? So the low impact is from that point?
We use low-impact development, best management practices in our stormwater management. You know, I'm not going to say that this is a, a small building that doesn't impact the site, but it is a, you know, we have low-impact development BMPs to handle our stormwater. We have porous asphalt and porous pavers and we have a, a large green roof, so that's going to help the stormwater runoff, the quality and the amount.
So the, the low-impact development to the site actually starts after we've removed all of that and the site is clean and clear and we have a large hole in the ground? So the major impact of the site has been done and now we have the low-impact of development to go with it?
Well, it's, it's the way we will build the site, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Let me go in.
Going back to the, that, Mr. McRae, but low-impact development is, stormwater management is a small percentage of it. Can you address the other points of low-impact development and how your proposed development meets those standards?
Here is my drainage, okay, we're into drainage.
I was looking more at the stormwater management.
But if you look at the state standard, it's a broad standard.
There is a broad standard, yes.
And so I'd like you to submit a report how you meet the broad standard besides stormwater.
Okay.
It's because what you're saying is more euphemistic than, than practical. And are you, can you also address the lighting and is there going to be a lighting study that?
We will provide a photometric plan. We, we show full cutoff lights around the, the outside of the building.
But how about the apartments?
The lighting in the apartments?
Yeah.
Yeah. We haven't looked at that. I will talk with the architect and see how that's going to be.
Because the standard is no light bleed off the property.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't know how, especially with 25 feet or 30 feet, how you're not going to have light bleed off the property.
Okay, we'll look at that.
And I don't think your residents would like us to put blackout shades like we do on other institutions that we've approved in this.
Okay, Nick, are you?
Yeah, sewage.
But before, back to Nick, Mr. McRae on the low-impact development, you know, nor, that, I think that really brings us right into the drainage plan. And normally from, I, I apologize, I was reviewing the drainage manual today and there's a checklist and you provide all the best management practices in what low impact development. And looking at the comments we got from engineering, you have not provided that yet, actually. That hasn't been provided to them. And looking at the overall comments we have from our engineering department, I think it would be fair to say, well, they begin by saying that the drainage summary report is not acceptable and they say the following revisions and additional information need to be submitted. And I don't know if you've seen this, but it's three pages of missing information.
We did get it on, on Friday.
Okay, so as I went through this again, it, what, the bottom line is there's really not a complete drainage proposal, there's not a complete drainage plan submitted at this time. There's so much information missing. And to Mr. McRae's point regarding both the structural and non-structural, uh, low-impact development plans, the, where the best management practices are, all of that stuff's still missing. So do you anticipate that you would be able, you would be there? It's a catch-22 for you guys, I get it with the fact that you're not through wetlands yet.
We're already working on that, we should have it by next week.
Okay, so by the time you're back before us, our engineering people will have had a chance to enter, to evaluate.
Yes.
A full drainage plan, where your low-impact development strategies are and your best management practices being implemented.
Yes.
Okay. And they had a lot of questions, as I recall, about how the, the whole roof system.
Right.
Okay.
And what is the timing for the update or the response to the traffic issues? Because as Mrs. Albin was just indicated, indicating, there's a timeline established for the environmental reports and drainage reports because that relates to what's already been requested through the Wetlands Agency, but there's a significant number of questions in the traffic report, such as the intersections that weren't included.
Right.
And the roadways that weren't included in the intersections of Livingston and Hamilton Avenue as an example. So what's the timing to get, to get all of the questions answered on the traffic report?
I haven't gotten that back from our traffic engineer because he knows that there is additional work to do and he knows that, you know, it's going to take some time. So I don't have a, a hard deadline on that for you at this time.
Okay.
So, but we will, we will get back to you on that.
And, you know, again, back to the question we keep raising about only having those two driveways, they're looking for your sightlines. I think that's going to.
We have those.
Okay, they don't have that?
Yep.
They didn't have that at the time that you submitted? Okay.
Yep, we've, we've done all, I mean, we, we had already reviewed all the sightlines, but we will give that in a, in a detailed form to them, so.
So were there any points that were raised in either, either the beta comments or the DPW comments, is it related to traffic that you do not intend to address or are you accepting that you will be addressing all of those questions?
We, we will be. I, you know, I haven't really sat down with the traffic engineer to figure out, you know, if, if he feels comfortable in, in just addressing all of them or just what, I'm not sure yet, but I believe he will be addressing all of them.
I think part of the request from DPW was to meet with them?
Yes.
Yes.
Where, has there been an effort to make an appointment to do that?
Uh, not yet, but we will be. We definitely want to meet with the, the sewer.
Yes.
Rich.
Both, both of those.
And we, just, just a little aside, we have met with them before, we've been in contact with them, we knew that they were doing a study and we were trying to, you know, before we submitted this, we asked if there was any update on their, their study and they said no. So just kind of new, I think they have some new information. I don't know if they have finished their study or they just have some preliminary information, but we will go back and, and meet with them. So. If I could just go on a little bit more with my stormwater management design, so we, we've got a, we, we've designed a, a green roof for the site. It's 1.5 acres in size. We also have porous asphalt.
Will anybody be allowed to go up?
No.
Okay.
Only for maintenance. And that's twice a year, basically. It's just a poll.
So it's of no benefit to the residents?
Not at this time, no.
Okay.
And all your condensers are on top of the green roof?
Yes, that's what these gray areas are.
Thanks.
Maybe you'd consider having the residents have access to some portion of the roof?
We can talk about that with the architect. It's something that I thought of, but we decided it wasn't something we wanted to do at this time, so. So the, the porous asphalt is the, the light gray roadway here. And as I said before, we're going to change the, the last section, which is the emergency access, to grass pavers. And then the dark gray shading is the permeable concrete pavers in the front of the site. And we have 1.24 acres of porous asphalt or permeable concrete pavers. We have a large, basically reservoir below the porous asphalt and the porous pavers of 18, over 18 inches of crushed stone. of eighteen, over 18 inches of crushed stone.
Is there, is there a maintenance factor to these?
Yes. That's really, it's something that Greenwich has a, a, basically, a list of things that need to be done for, you know, these, these kind of pavers. And that's something that's typical, they have to be vacuumed, I think, twice a year, at least twice a year, to remove debris and sand sediment. These will not be sanded, you don't want to sand this, it'll be just some salt. And also, there's less salt required for this kind of porous pavement. Basically, what happens is, in the wintertime, you don't get a lot of water running off, because basically, it'll just go, if it melts, it goes into the pavement and goes below the surface.
And the maintenance for those, those grass paved circles?
That's, it gets mowed, it gets mowed, you know, like a grass.
I mean, now, the maintenance, what goes down through, what stops it from clogging it up and making a porous imp-
It's just like a grass lawn. So, it's like a grass lawn, so it doesn't, it doesn't really-
There's no filter, there's no fabric on it?
No. No, it's basically plastic rings and then soil.
Okay, well, you will submit that?
Yes, we will.
Yeah, they showed them to us, and an application that came-
And where are you putting all the snow during the maintenance on this site? I don't see any real areas to pile snow.
Yeah, we, we will be addressing that, that's something I have to talk with the architect about and, and just figure out how we're going to address that. I mean, for smaller snowstorms, it'll be just plowed to the side, but if we have larger storms, it may have to be taken off.
And for a small storm, you have no, it's either planted with trees and shrubs, I don't see any open space to pile snow. Including the accessway for the fire trucks has to be plowed.
Right. Well, that would, I mean, this area just gets plowed to the side, either side of the road, similar to a street.
Mr. Hart, your experience with the previous pavers, snowmelt and freeze thaw cycle, can you shed any light on that? Does the freeze thaw cycle in a porous pavement have any effect on it with movement or cracking?
No, it doesn't, no, it doesn't. It, it doesn't, you mean, the, the freeze thaw of the, the ice expanding and, and breaking up the, the surface, it, it really doesn't. There's been a lot of studies up at the University of New Hampshire, and they have not found that the porous asphalt or the concrete pavers deteriorate, because basically, what happens is the water goes through and doesn't just sit there and freeze and break up the, the surface.
Have you specified this material in other projects?
Yes.
And has it, has it been successful?
Yes, yep. There's actually porous pavement on the Yukon campus. They, they were one of the first people to do a whole parking lot in the state. But they've also done it quite a bit up at the University of New Hampshire. We've done permeable pavers in Wilton, I'm trying to think, there's probably other places, I just don't have them off the top of my head. Ridgefield, we've done them also, so.
And what happens when there's a lot of shade? So, if, or if there's not sun hitting these areas, how is that going to impact the amount of salt that you use? Is that part of the, the shade analysis or the shadow analysis that you're conducting?
No, it isn't. I mean, basically, if you have to put salt down, you know, if there's fro, you know, areas that are freezing, then you do have to apply some salt. So, you know, maybe on the north side of the, the building, there will be more salt placed a little bit, so. But generally, it's, it's less salt than for, you know, a, a impervious surface.
Will there be runoff from these porous surfaces?
In very large storms, yes. Yep, there will be. And we have a drainage system designed to handle that.
Yeah, but they're not happy with-
We've made some modifications to it already, and we will be resubmitting that.
Yeah, and then they weren't happy with your sheet flow numbers, I think.
Well, yeah, I mean, basically, they, they treat the, the porous pavement as if it's a impervious. And so, we have redone our analysis to analyze the, the storage capacity underneath to offset the, the CN of an impervious surface. We've also provided storage in this area underneath the, the pavement.
Does that mean you're going to have to over-excavate to get that storage? And then what, very rock?
Not really, not really. This, let me, let me keep going, because there's, there's some other things, let me, I'll, I'll get to that right now. So, if you, this is, basically, we took two sections through the building. This section, let me just show you where we took the sections. There's one section that goes right through this one.
Pretty low.
That, I'll have to find that for you, the actual date, but it was, it was done in, it was done in December and the beginning of January of, I think it was 2012. That's when GeoDesign did their borings.
I just, never seen water that deep.
You're, oh.
This, I mean, this is not, this is only about three or four feet below the surface of the rock here. This is the, this is the rock surface, right here. Over here, it is quite a bit deeper. I mean, this is, this is where the rock goes way up, and the land is a lot higher here. And that is probably... It's about 35 feet deep.
I'm assuming the monitoring wells can, will show us the actual level.
Mr. Hart, we don't have that drawing in our packages, could you submit that?
Yes, we will.
Can you include on that drawing as well, profiles of the adjacent commercial buildings on the post road, or at least one of them? It's a car dealership, I think it is. It just, I believe that ARC will probably want to see a sense of scale in terms of the surrounding buildings. But I think actually, it goes to understanding the, the nature of the building itself in terms of its relationship to the site, and it'd be important for us.
And actually, since we're on the subject of, of procedure, we'll, we'll need all of these drawings that you're presenting this evening, since we don't have them, so just, if you could deliver them.
I have them on a flash drive, if you want that also, or do you want the hard copies?
The hard copies would be, would be helpful, thank you.
So, let me just try to finish up here. This, this is our watershed map. Basically, it's a, the map of all of the watershed areas that are affected by our proposal. The main watershed is Watershed 10, includes 11 also, and it discharges to this, I'm going to say, it's a 30-foot strip out to Hemlock Drive. Currently, the drainage from the site comes down and discharges in this area. So, what we have done is, we've basically, you know, done all of our impervious roof and impervious, or, green roof and our porous pavers to try to reduce the amount of runoff. And we've also provided some underground storage to get to a zero increase in runoff.
Does that runoff of the site, does it go up and go through the pond, and then from the pond into the road?
No, no.
There's a pipe, it's, it was not clear on the drawings, it appeared as if it went through the pond on the neighbor's property.
What happens is, it comes down, it ties into this culvert that comes out of the pond. So, this, there's a riser, kind of a riser structure in the pond-
Right.
-and then the water flows in an, in an easterly direction, and this pipe that comes from the site ties into that.
Where does that pipe go off the site? I mean, where does it hook up to the city, the town?
Well, it goes into a large wetland here. This is, I believe it's Edgewood Condominiums, the backside of Edgewood Condominiums. Basically, that, this drains to a, a catch basin in the, I think it's the Mercedes car dealership. And sometimes the water flows over the pavement, and that's what happens now.
I think the Edgewood condominiums you're referring to are ledges.
Oh, ledges, okay.
I think that's what you're referring to.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, it's the condominiums, they're relatively new, it's off the site here.
Yeah, that's a conservation, some of it, right, ledges.
I mean, it would be good somewhere to have where that goes, because I guess, at least if you have it on the drawings, it was not clear to me where that was discharging.
So, so, so this is the, this is the pond, this is the wetland, and this, I guess, is the, the condominium complex. The water comes down right, right in this area, and then comes back, you know, from this catch basin, it goes back into West Putnam Avenue.
And you're not increasing the amount of runoff?
That's correct, yep.
I was sort of curious, where, where, where is it going? I mean, the, the site right now is approximately half-developed and half-natural.
Well, it's, you know, half-natural is, it's still, you know, it's got a, as we've said before, it's got a very thin layer of soil over, over ledge.
Right.
And so, there isn't a great capacity for infiltration of, of stormwater right now. So, and so what we're doing is basically mimicking that, we're discharging to, to, you know, basically, the same analysis points, you know, this one being the major one, but we also have water coming out, there's a catch basin in the post, or, West Putnam Avenue, at both of these locations, so, you know, we're, we're maintaining the same amount of runoff, pre and post. And then over here is the same thing, we don't have any increase over here, because we, we don't have a, an increase really in the imperviousness, so. Just, if you want to look at all the numbers in Appendix E-
Could I just ask a, a question? You said that it's, the runoff is not going to be increased, but is it adequate now? You said that there was some kind of runoff over the parking lot in Mercedes, is that due to this site?
It's due, well, I mean, there's, there's a lot of area up here, too, that comes down, and, and area from the ledges that comes down to this, this wetland right in here. So, there is some water that comes, comes from our site to that point, but there's also other areas, too.
But can you characterize that the drainage is adequate for the site?
Currently?
Yeah.
There's basically a 12-inch pipe that comes down there, and it, it doesn't probably handle all the flow right now.
It does not? So, you're not going to handle all the flow?
We will, we're going to be basically reducing the flow-
Oh, I thought you said, okay.
-so that it will fit, you know, into the existing system.
DPW engineering's not happy with it yet, but, um...
So, anyway, Appendix E of our stormwater report provides the summary tables of the existing and proposed flows for the one-year, two-year, five-year, 10-year, 25, 50, and 100-year storms.
Yeah, they didn't seem to have 100-year, was one of their comments, but.
Oh, it's, it's there.
Okay.
They also made a comment that we didn't use the correct precipitation values. Basically, they say we're supposed to use the, the new extreme precipitation values that you find on the website, and that's what we were using directly from the website, because when you use that website, you put in your location, and it gives you the precipitation, it gives you the runoff intensity frequency curves. But Greenwich has, I guess, taken a, a representative extreme precipitation and just applied that throughout the whole town, so we're using that now. It, it, it made very little difference, I mean, it was a hundredth of a, or a couple hundreds of a, an inch difference for these storms. There was one other thing I wanted to hand out, we talked a little bit about the utilities, we talked about the sanitary sewer, we're going to talk about that more in just a minute, but I also wanted to hand out the Aquarian will serve letter, I'm not sure why this wasn't in your package.
Microphone, please.
Can you go back and put your site development plan up and just take me through where the retaining walls are and what the heights are? Because it, I think the public would like to understand where the, where your retaining walls are and roughly how high they are.
This, this is probably the highest retaining wall, right in here, I think it's about 12 feet. I'd have to get my plans up.
I'm on your way.
This retaining wall over in here is about 11 feet to, 11 to 12 feet through here, and it basically does wrap all the way around the, the parking lot, it comes down the, the driveway. There's also, there's an existing retaining wall right now behind the BMW dealership, and we'll be extending that a little bit. There'll also be a retaining wall on the other side. Retaining wall behind the BMW, but BMW dealership is approximately eight feet. In this corner, six feet directly behind the building. And three feet over in this, this corner.
Where is the 20-foot-high retaining wall? Or the, or the largest retaining wall?
I don't think, we don't have a 20-foot-high retaining wall. The highest one is, is here, it's 12, about 12 feet, 11 to 12 feet. Let me just double-check and make sure I'm not- This retaining wall over in here is approximately nine feet high. I think that covers, generally covers the retaining walls.
And is there rock ledge in that area? In other words, how are you going to tie in those retaining walls to the, to the rock ledge, if I'm understanding the site correctly, in the, in the northern side of it, right?
Yeah.
That is going to be a concrete retaining wall cast in place.
But typically, retaining walls are L-shaped, and that's showing right on the property line. Do you have an easement to put structure across the property line?
We do, we do have enough room, we've looked at that, to, to put the footing there. Well, the L-shaped is, the, the big footing comes back this way. I'll double-check that, I think, I think we're okay with that, we did review it, this-
That was identified on your drawings as being a, not poured concrete wall, but pre-cast blocks.
This one down, this one here is, is poured in place.
And the slope on those block walls, I don't know what it is, but again, back to Mr. Fox's question, it's, if you've got a section cut through there or something, I suppose it would be good to have that.
Okay. Okay.
There's not a lot of wiggle room.
No.
And will they be getting, going to tie back into the rock?
No, they, I mean, basically, this, this will be tied back into soil. In the grid tiebacks, it'll be into soil.
Okay. Is that something that typically a structural engineer reviews once it's over the three feet? And do you have a structural engineer to certify to those?
In our town, it's a separate building permit.
Yep.
And technically, our zone doesn't allow them on the property line above five feet.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
I think sewer, right?
Stormwater?
We want to talk about sewer.
Well, just a second, just, because he's not the sewer, he's not the sewer guy.
I can ask Tom Knowlton.
Before you move on to sewer, the, as you're the site designer, as Mr. Fox has mentioned, how, how did you come to the, I'm, I'm aware that there's a larger piece of property out there. So, how did you come to this configuration with these driveways to the road and otherwise not encompassing any of these properties in this site plan?
I'm not sure I understand your question. I mean, these, these are, these, these parcels basically connect to the, the main parcel, I mean, I'm not sure what you're asking.
Well, um...
The, it is shown that Post-Road Iron Works owns some properties to the northeast. And the, well, I don't know if that's the one, but I, I think that's, there's a person's name on that, but I think to the northeast corner, I think that's what you're referring to.
Right, well, and I, I mean, as I understand it, the earlier iteration of this...
Included more properties, yes.
Included more properties, and I think that the same folks have control. I think that's exactly what the attorney said, that their property hasn't changed hands in many, many years.
Right.
So...
I really don't know the answer to that question, other than it was their internal business decision, what properties are in play.
Right, to use for this project.
Yes.
And the legal arrangements to get down to the post-road between these properties, can you speak to that?
The legal arrangements? They, they own...
That, that property is in that title right now, they own those strips?
They own, yes. This, this is where the Post-Road Iron Works building is right now.
Yep.
This is where the access to their facility is right now.
Yes, and in between there?
This?
Yes.
BMW.
That's BMW, not owned by the family.
No.
One more property question. The property directly to the west?
They could do this differently because...
Uh, this?
No, uh, that, yes, that's a residence?
Yes.
Is that in control of the applicant, or is that a separate parcel?
It's a separate parcel, I'm not sure if it's in control or not. I think it was probably, but I'm not sure if it still is or not.
And that's a single-family residence?
Yes.
Okay. Getting back to you quickly, just something I had said before, actually. It'd be beneficial, actually, to see why you're putting your site sections together, maybe a, a simple site section through that as well. So we can see the relationship of that building in comparison to your site and the facade of the building.
We can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the question Mrs. Raymer was asking about the additional property owned by the applicant was also raised by our Conservation Director in its whether or not there is any possibility of getting open space for this development out of that additional property, which is raised by the Conservation Director. And I think you're the wrong person to say this to, I think you're going to say it's the architect, but I'm just going to go ahead and say it. The questions that we've been raising about buffer, areas for children to play, light, all those issues, you know, 830G over, surpasses our own regulations. But our own regulate, in some areas, but our own regulations in this area are based on basic zoning principles of the very foundation of zoning, which was to provide light ventilation safety for people back in the days of tenements. And, I mean, I, I have an adverse reaction to the courtyard, just because it reminds me, as we keep pointing out to you, this feels very urban to us. It reminds us of a lack of outdoor space. And so even though you may not be focusing on our, on our regulations, it's still appropriate for us to consider whether or not there's enough open space, whether there is, and I'm referring you to our site plan standards, open space screening and buffering between similar and dissimilar uses to assure light air privacy and freedom from nuisance or other disturbance. That goes beyond it being our regulations, it's for the health and safety of the people who occupy this building. And I feel like, as we discuss this and we ask you each independent question about the site, we're really getting back to the quality of life for the residents of this building. And we haven't even begun to address the impact on neighborhood character of this structure, which is a complete change for our town. But just in those areas, it seems to me that your group should be doing a better job of addressing those basic rights of the individuals occupying these buildings, this building. I guess the two courtyards makes it one building, I could never figure that out. I believe you have a firewall between them, is that, is that right?
There's a number of firewalls in this building, if I understand correctly.
And there's a firewall between the parking structure and the building.
Yeah, that's true.
Right, and then there's also between the two courtyard halves.
I think that's something that Ray Sullivan can talk about, I think there are more, I think there's one down the middle, but I think there's more than just that one.
But again, this is about, Mr. Fox was talking to you about the buffer. Right in front of this building, you're going into all the car dealerships, they just step right in from one use to the other, and you say, wow, RA1 right next to this type of use. And there's really no amenity, no open space, no playground, no way you can be outside. It's not why people move to Connecticut. I mean, they might as well stay in a major metropolitan area for this.
Let's go into the smelly, or the sewer.
Okay, sewer.
Do you want this, or...
Is this your sewer person?
Yes.
Okay. Well, um, do you like wastewater scientist or something better?
No, no, I'm not a scientist, but good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission. My name is Tom Knowlton, I'm a professional civil engineer, not a scientist, and I'm in the Water and Wastewater Department at Mylona McBroom, and I work with Mr. Hart. I have 18 years of water and wastewater experience, and I was one of the individuals that worked on the wastewater evaluation for this project. So, we initially met with town staff and the town's engineering consultant, CDM Smith, to talk about this proposed project at this location and what, what kind of impacts it might have on the, on the local sewer system there. And we obtained copies of sewer system maps, so we could do our evaluation and calculations. We also obtained copies of reports that were done by the town's consultant at various times in the past, so we could review those and review the results, flow studies and things of that nature as well. We performed a downstream capacity analysis with the assumption that we could connect into the eight-inch sewer main in West Putnam Avenue. And that would flow through the, the Horse Neck Brook Sewer, which is to the east of the site. And in, as part of our evaluation, we found that there were three segments in the lower end of the Horse Neck Brook Sewer that are currently overcapacity at times of peak flow. There was evidence in the, the previous studies of surcharging in some of the manholes and also some, some other things in there that would, that would be necessitated for improvements before any additional flows could be added to the system. So, as part of our analysis, we also then calculated the flows from the proposed site and superimposed those over the existing peak flows and found that those same three segments were still overcapacity. So, we proposed improvements to those three segments that would alleviate the existing problem as well as provide capacity for the proposed development. We understand that the town has reviewed our study, they have come back with comments, we received those at the end of last week. And we look forward to meeting with town staff and addressing those comments, but I'm happy to entertain any questions that you might have.
Well, the last comment that we do have from, from the sewer department is, we cannot recommend approval of this project at this time. That's what's facing us tonight. So I assume that's what you're going to work on?
Yes, we understand they've done some additional sewer flow, flow measurements over the past 10 or 11 months. We have not received a copy of those yet, so we look forward to receiving those and being able to evaluate those and redoing our analysis.
How many, how many units could the current system handle without...
Well, the current, the current system, as it would flow by gravity from the site through the Horse Neck Brook Sewer, the current system at certain times of peak flow is overcapacity in three segments.
How many times is a year, is that?
All the time. I don't know exactly how many times that occurred, but it was during, it was during peak flow events.
Is that daily, weekly, monthly? I mean, you did the analysis, I didn't, so I'm trying to understand, you said it was over sewer. So how many times?
I don't have the exact number, off the top of my head, I apologize.
But Mr. Knowlton, could you, I'm not trying to hold you to the number, I'm just trying to understand magnitude.
Like I said, I don't, don't have the exact number.
Mr. Knowlton, can you describe to us what's, what's a peak flow event?
A peak, peak flow is, is, is basically the, the highest flow that the system would see. So, in the case of the Horse Neck Brook Sewer, a peak flow is also contributed by rainfall. Because there are, there are some places where roof leaders from buildings are still connected to the sanitary sewer system. I understand the town has done an evaluation and is currently working at getting those removed from the sanitary and connected to the storm sewer, which would alleviate some of these peak flow problems.
So, technically, say, on any given day, or any given rainy day, during the maximum amount of usage, you could obtain one of these peak flow events, then?
Correct.
Okay, so it could happen on a daily basis, based on rainfall, if it was raining?
Well, by nature, the definition of peak flow is, is the highest flow that you would see, so...
Okay.
I guess, to answer Mr. Fox's question, the peak flow happened once, but there are other high, high-flow events.
So, so you then did your analysis with adding 300-plus units. What did the analysis show of how many more increases would it happen?
Well, the, the additional flow from the proposed development would increase flow in each segment, obviously, but there were no other segments that would go over 100% capacity. The only three segments that were over 100% capacity were before, on the existing system.
Is there an increased number of times of peak flow in those three sections after your analysis? So, so, did you, getting to, does the development cause more peak flow events than not?
It, it would not cause more peak flow events, no.
But I thought you said earlier, in answer to Mr. Fox's question, that no, maybe I misunderstood it, no, one unit added to this sewer is going to increase, I mean, it's obviously going to increase the flow into the sewer, and it wouldn't be tolerated now, it couldn't be handled now?
And there's three pipe segments in the Horse Neck Brook Sewer that are currently overcapacity during peak flow.
Yeah, what...
During average flow is a different story, but we look at peak flow.
Right, and what, just to, just to, to put numbers on that, they're running it above 97% of capacity when they're supposed to run, as I understand it, at 60 to 75, that that's the, you're supposed to do 65, 60 to 75% as your flow rate? Is that correct? And that even after you've, now, you've got some stuff that you want to work on, but even then, you're at 97%. So you're still over, if you will, the rated capacity? This is, I'm trying to understand this, because this is not a field in which we have a lot of expertise, but we rarely see so much concern from this department.
Mm-hmm.
So...
Yeah, I believe you're referring to the town sewer division comments that, that reference that 60 to 70% number.
The theoretical maximum, yes.
Correct, so, that is basically a comfort level that the sewer system operators would have. If they dictate some sort of number like that, again, that's more of a comfort level. As far as engineering goes, if you're under 100% of the capacity of the pipes, then you don't have surcharging, you don't have overflows, and you can, you can actually operate your system up to 100% of the flows.
So you're arguing that running at 97% is acceptable, even though our town's standards are different?
With, with improvements to those three segments, we calculated that it would be flowing at 97% of capacity with the proposed development added in during a peak event.
Well, and he, the improvement that you're proposing is to reline, is that correct? The only improvement you're really proposing is to reline these pipes in those bad segments. So all that does, it seems like, is accelerate the flow and reduce the leakage, if you will.
Infiltration.
The infiltration, but the less technical term is leakage either way, the infiltration rate. So you change the infiltration rate and you smooth out the flow, but you haven't done anything for the capacity, the line in your rating, according to him, 46,000 gallons of sewage a day.
That's, yeah, that's our, our, our flow, correct.
And, and he's saying we're already running at 97%?
In those three pipe segments, our analysis showed that they're over 100%, without improvements.
So you reline them, doesn't add capacity to the system, but you're adding 46,000 gallons a day? You're not adding real capacity to the system.
The relining addresses the flow concerns in each individual segment. So the relining that we propose is cured-in-place pipe, which is CIPP, the acronym, and that actually provides a better, a smoother inner pipe wall than the existing pipe that's old cast iron and vitrified clay pipe. So that's, that's where you get the better flow, when you have a smoother-walled pipe. So the capacity in a smoother-walled pipe is going to be greater than an old pipe that is maybe rusted-out cast iron or tuberculated pipe of some kind.
But he's saying here that he actually thinks, I, I think I saw him actually say this, so somebody tell me if I'm wrong, but that he is looking for bigger diameter pipe, that that's what's going to add capacity.
A larger diameter pipe would definitely increase capacity.
That fixing the line, that relining and doing the CIPP liner isn't going to solve the really significant issue, which is the pipes, as far as he's concerned, are maxed out, in terms of what they can handle.
Right, we, we understand the nature of his comment, and like I said, we look forward to meeting with him to discuss the particulars of his comments, but...
It seemed, given the amount of time and effort that you've put into this project, you would have, obviously you, you picked this up early, that you would have a, a solution for it that's acceptable.
Well, the 60 to 70% concept that were contained in the comments from last week is new to us, that was never brought up.
Isn't it in our town's standards?
I'm not aware of it, no.
I would, I mean, I think, Nick?
I don't, I don't think it's in the, any of the standards that we have.
It's described as sound sewer design practice.
Yeah, I mean, he says it's standard...
Industry standard is what it seems like.
It, it varies from town to town, so...
Mr. Knowlton, where are the three segments that need to be repaired?
At the southern end of the Horse Neck Brook Sewer.
Can you show us on the map there?
Yes. The first segment is where it crosses the railroad tracks. Let's see, where am I at here?
Bottom, right there.
Where it crosses the railroad tracks and then comes on to Horse Neck Lane. There's three segments in a row. It's 15-inch pipe. One of them is cast iron, two of them are vitrified clay pipe.
Roughly how many lineal feet?
Roughly 1,000 feet or so.
And also, all of these repairs are actually off-site in public right-of-way?
Correct.
And has there been videoing of the pipe? I mean, in other words, is this just kind of theoretical based on knowing that there's a pipe that runs there? But I mean, has anyone actually videoed the pipe and looked at the condition of it? And would that impact your proposed solution?
Yeah. The town studies that I referenced, that we reviewed, they did do inspections. They did do visual inspections by opening up each manhole along the Horse Neck Brook sewer, and they did do video inspections.
And can you expand on the condition of the pipe that was found in the video inspection?
Some of the pipe was found to have cracks. Some of it was found to have root intrusion. And the lining that we proposed is actually a structural liner. So, in the sections that we would line, if there were any cracks or if there were any structural problems with the pipe, the cured-in-place pipe is basically its own pipe, its own host pipe. So, even if the existing pipe were to deteriorate, crack, and fall apart all around it, that pipe would stay intact and structural. So, it would take care of any existing problems such as cracks, any infiltration or inflow that's coming in those pipes right now because of those cracks. So, it would actually reduce some of that inflow if you lined a pipe.
And that segment that you were just referring to is that the segment that runs partially underneath is the building at 330 Railroad Avenue and underneath the brook, right before it gets to going underneath the railroad station... The railroad tracks, rather?
I believe the segment that you're referring to that runs under the building is just north of the three segments that we proposed for improvements.
So, not an area that would have the liner solution?
Correct.
Yeah.
So, you never really answered it, so you're saying that there's not a number... You're saying the 46,000 gallons doesn't really affect the pipe after it's been improved? And if you cut your usage by 25%, that really isn't a factor?
Well, the proposed site would add flow to the system, no doubt.
Right.
And if we did no improvements, those three segments would even be further above 100% capacity. But with the lining and with the calculations based on that improved coefficient of friction factor on the lining, we do show that we can be under 100% capacity, 97%, as you mentioned.
At all times?
That is during the peak flow event.
So...
So, during normal flows, it's going to be considerably less than that.
After you line those three segments, you're stating there will be no peak flow events where there's surcharging or anything?
Well, they need to work...
That's a loaded question because you do have storm. You do have storm going into that right now, and the town's actively working on removing those storm connections from the sanitary line.
But what percentage of the storm events causing the surge? I mean, right now, you're at... They're at 97%. What percentage?
Right. We used the peak event for our calculations. So, any of the other storms, even if they might have been large storms, if they're less than the peak event, it's going to be less than the 97% that we calculated.
Right. But in your analysis of the town's data, what percentage of the flow is being caused by infiltration?
I think they haven't seen...
Well, the previous study that was done in 2014 identified infiltration as being about 453 gallons per minute, if I remember correctly. And that was... Trying to remember what percentage that was.
This branch?
For this entire sewer shed, yes. Correct.
So, what Mr. Femenella said is that lining may not be sufficient to address capacity. In some cases, it is necessary to replace a line with a larger diameter sewer. In addition, based on the data we have today, it is unlikely that all of the proposed segments are candidates for lining. And I guess, he says, at least one may require an excavated repair, which says that it isn't capable of being relined because it's damaged sufficiently. I shudder to think about that when we were talking about contamination, but so I guess this is...
How do we... I think...
They need to work this out with Mr...
You've got to work it out with sewer.
Yes.
You've got to work this out with them because we don't...
Mm-hmm.
All we can do is get his report.
Right.
And it's basically telling us that the development is not acceptable at this point.
There was another question, I think we discussed yesterday. Ms. DeLuca had the thought of asking if there's another route you can take for the sewer.
Yeah, that's a great question. We actually spoke with Mr. Femenella and CDM Smith about other possible connection points early on in the process. Essentially, everything from the site does flow to the east into Horse Neck Brook sewer and then south along the Horse Neck Brook. We did talk about the possibility of pumping to the west. We'd have to go up over a rise in the road there in West Putnam Avenue, but that could get us to another portion of the sewer collection system. Then, that, of course, raised the question of, would the pump station be public or private? And at the time, Mr. Femenella was not interested in having a public station and nor did he want to see a private station. So, that's why we directed our analysis towards the gravity connection.
Now, I'm a little confused. You've talked to him recently, then, because he said in his memo, he had last spoken with you in 2014.
We met with Mr. Femenella and CDM Smith together.
This week?
In December of 2014.
Okay. So, a year and a half ago, that's what he was thinking.
We spoke with him again in December 2015 before we submitted our report to ask if they had that updated study with the updated flow information.
Got it.
And they did not. So, I'm hoping that next time we meet with them, they'll have that information so we can obtain it and redo our analysis.
Okay. It looks like he didn't recall having met with you more recently.
Well, like I said, it was a discussion, not an in-person meeting in December of 2015, just three and a half months ago.
Is there another area where there's a passageway through or underneath the railroad track that connects into the main pipe on the south side that runs the plan? Is there another point in downtown Greenwich?
My knowledge of the system at this area, and this is Sewer Shed Area 24, according to the report that CDM Smith had done, everything essentially flows to the east here and ends up crossing at that one point. Now, further to the west, there are areas that cross elsewhere to get to the main tunnel, the sewer tunnel. But from our site, in order to get there, like I said, we would have to pump. There is a bypass down one of these other residential streets that was mentioned in the CDM Smith study from 2014, and the possibility of increasing the size of that to capture some of this flow that's west of the Horse Neck Brook sewer to alleviate the amount of flow going into the Horse Neck Brook sewer. But we did not further evaluate that location because the town staff told us that that would probably be a limited benefit.
So, that last option, that involves creating, just in layman's terms, a new pipe to connect into one of those more western crosspoints into the tunnel?
Actually, most likely, it would be increasing one of the sewer mains that currently runs through one of these residential neighborhoods and increasing the pipe size to connect over to Horse Neck Brook sewer on a current existing pipe.
So, much more involved situation than what you're proposing in the current...
With limited benefit, correct. Yeah.
Anybody else? Next.
Thank you.
Yeah. Could we... We'll take a 10-minute break.
Good evening. My name is Ray Sullivan of the Sullivan Architectural Group. We're located in Fairfield, Connecticut. For the last 10 to 15 years, you know, we've been fortunate enough to work on, you know, many, many multifamily projects at any given time. As we do right now, we are involved with, you know, as many as 1,000 units. And, you know, we've designed, you know, many different types and sizes and shapes and locations and feel we have a good knowledge, working knowledge of the multifamily market. If I could, what I'd like to do is kind of give a brief description of the building. I think you've all seen the drawings and you know the building, and we've talked about it. But if I could, I'd like to talk about the building in section so we kind of understand the heights. You know, sometimes it's hard to read the drawings. Talk about the plan a little bit and then go to the exterior, if that's okay.
Are you the proper person to talk about why we have 355 units?
No, I'm not. I mean, it's a...
We keep searching.
Yeah. If I may, if we look at this building section, the section to the west shows the upper courtyard, the section to the east shows the lower courtyard. So, what we really have, and it's not perfectly this way, but what we really have is five residential floors over two levels of parking. We have some overlap of different spaces, but that's pretty much, you know, the premise of the building. So, we've got, you know, five levels here, you know, that wrap around the exterior of the building, wrap around the interior upper courtyard, you know. And then, when we get to the corridor, that we drop down that story, and that's where the step occurs. So, you can't, you know, you may not see that exactly, you know, in elevation, you know, but in section, you know, hopefully, it's clear. The, you know, the red line...
That was not a drawing that was in our set also, so it would have been...
Yes. I'm sorry. This drawing is in the set. It's not colored, but I'll be giving this to you.
Okay. I don't remember seeing it. I don't remember seeing it because that clearly shows. I guess I didn't... I should have, but I didn't realize that these outdoor spaces are at different levels.
Yes. It was, you know, it should be an A202 in the, you know, in the set.
Regardless, you're going to be...
Regardless, we'll submit that, yes. The red line represents the average grade, and so what we did was we took... We originally took spots about 40 feet on center, all the way around the building, you know, calculated the average grade. I thought, well, maybe let's get those dimensions a little tighter, so we actually did it again at 25 to 30 feet. We took, you know, some 60 or so spots all the way around the building, created the average grade, and it gives us a building height of just under 78 feet.
So, the red line is the proposed grade or the existing grade?
The red line is the average grade, you know. So, the grades up and down, yeah. So, you know, on sheet, I think it's 001 in our set. It actually gives all those spots all the way around the building. So, we took the average of that. And, you know, I've got a spreadsheet to break it down, make it easier to understand.
Did you on that drawing put where the existing grade is?
The existing grade actually shows on the elevations, but I could put it on this drawing if it, you know...
So, is there an interconnection between those two courtyards? Do you have to get in an elevator and go up one floor, down one floor, something?
Yes, it's vertical circulation. It's not directly connected. They're fully separated by a story. The... So, this is the middle level of the parking, you know, plan, and so that's really the largest parking level. You know, we have discussed where visitors park, where does a potential tenant who wants to come and, you know, perhaps rent, you know, where does he go? So, that person will actually come and drive into the building, and this gray area or the lighter tan area is the area that's set aside for visitors and, you know, visitors or potential tenants. You know, they can certainly use the outdoor space, but, you know, it's set up, you know, for their use here. It's gated beyond so that they won't be, you know, driving throughout the building. The... This being the, you know, the middle-level entrance, there is, you know, there are walkways adjacent to those parking spaces. They come down. There's a lower lobby, you know, and there's elevators that go up to the leasing offices that are directly above the amenity spaces and then access to the, you know, exterior courtyards. While the diagram's open, you know, I was just going to make mention of the question about the pool. There's a dotted line here that shows the pool, so we've taken that away from, you know, being able to use that down in the parking level, you know, and then...
Looks like it's in an aisle of parking, isn't it?
No. The, you know, there is no... There was no parking or circulation through that area because of the depth of the pool.
Okay.
So, when we conceptualized the parking plan, we actually had parking spaces there. When we worked with a landscape architect and they located the pool, we had to take those spaces away. So, that's actually kind of a... Where the pool is, is a low-head room where, you know, we haven't gotten into all the detail, but we've got kind of mechanical spaces at full height, you know, to, you know, put pool equipment and so on, you know, in there. So, there are three entrances, main entrances, you know, into the building. On a vehicular basis, you know, we're down on the west side. You know, the main entry, you know, is right in the center, you know, and then the driveway goes up and you can access, you know, the west side, you know, just directly above that. If someone parks out here or if somebody pulls into the lower level beyond, there is a lobby here that starts at the lowest level. So, somebody could actually park, you know, outside, you know, come in, walk in a door. On the lower-level plan, it shows a sidewalk that goes up into that lobby. There are two elevators, a stair, and so they can circulate throughout the building. If someone, you know, chose to park, you know, in the middle level, there is this main lobby here, you know, or they can come over to this one as well. And when we... If we turn to the level up above this for parking, you know, there is, you know, another elevator lobby up on the far west side. As far as loading is concerned, there are three loading areas. There are two internal, one exterior. I mean, I think we've talked about that a little bit. You know, on the east side, below this area, there are two bays. You know, those bays are meant for, you know, kind of a van, you know, they've got 10-foot-high ceiling heights. On the upper level, you know, if you drive around the back of the building and back into this space up here, that's actually a loading dock so that you can actually get a, you know, full 14-foot-high vehicle, you know, in that location. And then, in the, you know, alongside here, you know, if a larger vehicle wanted to pull in and sideload, they'd have the ability to do that at that location. The diagram, you know, A105 represents one of the typical floor plans. So, we've got, you know, kind of a figure eight with the, you know, the two courtyards. So, we've got the, you know, the main circulation, vertical circulation area here. You know, we've got one on the east side, you know, we've got one up on the west side.
Can you tell us what the average or square footage is for the studios, the one-bedroom, the two-bedroom, and the three-bedroom units are?
Yeah, there are multiple sizes. I have a spreadsheet.
Average, you do? Was that submitted?
I'm not sure if it was submitted. I, you know, I can give you the spreadsheet because that way it gives every single one. You know, there are some smaller ones and bigger ones. But, you know, on average, you know, on average, the studios tend to be, you know, 575. You know, the one-bedrooms tend to be 750, you know, but it could be 725, could be 775. The... That's the one-bedroom. The two-bedroom tend to range from, you know, 980 to, you know, 1,050. And, you know, the three-bedrooms, you know, tend to be in the area of, you know, 11.5 to, you know, close to 13. The, so, so we have the, we have these two courtyards and the, the, you know, I, I, I don't want to call it, you know, an urban environment, I'm just, just to paint a picture, you know, to, the, the-
Well, at least you're good.
The, I, I, I just want to be able to paint a picture, it's, you know, like, how big are the courtyards, you know, it's, you know, and, and so the, so the courtyards are, you know, you know, one's a little over 10,000, one's a little over 11,000 square feet. So, let, let's just say they're 100 by 100, you know, you know, roughly. And so, you know, is, if you, if, you know, if you had a, if, you know, if you had a street that had, you know, you know, two, two lanes in both directions, parking on the side, you know, that dimension's going to be about 70 feet, you had 15-foot sidewalks, add a little bit more, you know, and then the buildings go up. So, again, I'm not saying this is on a street, but I'm just trying to paint a picture. If you went down a, you know, a nice shopping street and you had buildings on either side, that's kind of the, the width of the-
You wouldn't have sunlight in the middle, would you?
Depends what time of the year you're measuring it.
Yeah, the, yeah, I mean, if, if, if I had my drawers and I can get, you know, direct sunlight into every unit, you know, you know, we would. But, but, but we think we have, you know, quality courtyards. And, you know, then, you know, landscape architect does a nice job of using, you know, kind of light color so that the light's bouncing around. So, so, you know, I, you know, I think they're actually, you know, you know, quality courtyard. We, we did talk about amenity area a little bit and, and if you asked me what the threshold was, you know, I'd, you know, I'd say the minimum threshold would be, you know, 100 square feet per unit. So, and if you can get more, you, you know, you'd like to get more. So, each, every unit has a, has a balcony, so every, every balcony is about, on average, you know, 50 square feet. So, so if, if, if you took the area of both the exterior courtyards, the two courtyards, and then you took the area of the amenity area that's off the lower courtyard, you know, we'd probably net out, you know, 115 to 120 square feet of rec area, you know, per unit. And, and, you know, we did talk about the, the roof a little bit and, and we'll work with Ted to see if we couldn't, you know, get some rooftop garden area. But, you know, the roof is accessible, you know, we want to strike a balance between the stormwater drainage and recreation area and, but, but we'll work with Ted to see if we can get, you know, you know, more in that regard.
Why did you put all your compressors on the roof instead of a typical unit where they're outdoor, you know, right built into the sidewalls like you're seeing in a lot of the Avalon product and?
Well, I, I, personally, I don't find that an attractive solution. A couple of things happened, you know, first of all, the, the, you know, we're trying to do an efficient unit and the through-wall condensers are not as efficient, they get a low, much lower SEER rating than the, the regular, you know, sit-on-the-ground condenser.
Isn't it equal, you end up pumping the refrigerant, you know, from a roof down to the five floors below or across the unit?
Yeah, no, no, it's, you know, the-
Aren't you losing that efficiency?
Well, I, you know, I suppose if you, if you, if you weren't, if you, you know, if, you know, does the pumping take energy? Yes, but, but, you know, you know, but overall, that condenser is far, far more efficient than the through-wall condenser and the through-wall condenser is limited because the, it's the fan size, so as the fan gets bigger, then you get these big grills on the side of the, you know, the, you know, the unit and, and, you know, you know, we've got a number of units and every one would have a grill, so, you know, you know, we actually, you know, prefer the, the more efficient, you know, sit-on-the-ground condenser.
Are there heat pumps or are you using a?
Usually we, we'll, we'll use a, you know, a hydro air product so, so that will, every unit's, again, has this balcony and then every unit has a, you know, exterior closet. And so, we'll put a, probably, we haven't fully designed the system, we'll probably use a tankless hot water heater out there, that'll act as a boiler and a hot water heater. You know, that'll pump hot water to an air handler that's in the unit, you know, and then from there, the ductwork will be distributed. So, so in reality, you know, 87, 80%, 87 to 88% of, of the HVAC requirements for the building, you know, are taken care of in, in, in each one of those smaller hydro air units. You know, you know, we're, you know, we're finding that the, you know, the units are smaller and smaller based on the higher level of insulation, you know, we get in the building and how, how tight we get, you know, we have air sealing details, you know, it's, you know, you know, we're, we're able to try to make the units tight. And so, the, what we have left is we have, uh, some rooftop units that'll come down and serve the, you know, the corridors and the amenity space.
300-plus rooftop?
I'm sorry, do you have your microphone?
Sorry, 300-plus rooftop, one per unit, right?
Yes, yeah, and they're, they're located on the roof plans.
What building construction type?
Uh, type 3.
And you're allowed to go over four stories in type 3?
Type, type 3 is termed exterior non-combustible, so there are a couple of different ways to get that, or there are multiple ways to get that, but, but it'll, it'll be a type 3 construction.
Is gas your heat source?
Most likely, yes. The, the, um, the electric units are far, far more efficient today than they ever were. You know, if you get the variable refrigerant flow units, that's a heat pump system that works down to like minus 5 degrees now. So, but, you know, some of the more standard heat pump units that that come out recently work, you know, 100% efficient down to 15 to 17 degrees. So, so, you know, typically we use gas, but we, you know, we wouldn't, you know, we wouldn't investigate all of that. The, um, so to touch upon one point, we will clarify the handicap spaces. So, I believe we need 11, it's 2% and, and I'll clarify any, any space that looks small, but I, you know, I, I don't think we have any issue, you know, with the handicap spaces. You know, as far as being an accessible building, because of the elevators, you know, you know, every unit on every floor, you know, is what we call a type B unit, everyone's an adaptable unit and then 10% of them will be a type A unit, you know, and those 10%, that, that type A unit has a, you know, kind of slightly higher level of, you know, accessibility built in, you know, already, but they'll all be ADA accessible.
10% of each class, studio, one-bedroom, two-bedroom?
Yes, what you would generally do proportionate and, and, and then, and then, you know, you know, we don't want to stack it all in one place, so, so, so yes, it would be a proportionate share across the board.
And how are you handling trash?
There are, there are, there are two trash rooms, you know, you know, one on the east end, one on the west end, they go, they go down into a compactor and, you know, and then, for lack of a better term, they kind of come out in these sausages and, and, you know, we've got some storage area for that and then, you know, you know, we probably have to go through a little bit more analysis of how much waste and, you know, is it picked up every day, is it every third day, you know, but, but, you know, we have trash rooms and trash chutes, you know, down to compacters.
What do you do about recyclables?
There, so there are, you know, there are multiple, you know, trash rooms on the floor, usually those go into, you know, the plastic bins and then, you know, the, you know, the staff takes that down.
Mr. Sullivan, can you, for the benefit of the rest of the commission, expand on what type 3 construction is?
Uh, well, it's, it's simply, you know, you know, type 3 is a non-combustible exterior construction. So, so, so type, type 5 is, is kind of a lower on the rung and that is typically just wood frame, you could protect it or not protect it. You know, type 4 is, you know, you know, heavy timber, you know, like big glue lamps and, so, so the next type is type 3, which is exterior non-combustible. So, you could, you know, you could build a wood frame building and you could fire retard and treat the exterior lumber so that the exterior was non-combustible, you could do it that way. You know, you could do it with, you know, concrete block and, on the, on the perimeter and then wood frame the entire inside. You know, you could do the same thing with steel studs around the perimeter and then whatever you choose on the inside. So, so by definition, it is a non-combustible exterior.
What is your intent for the interior to be constructed of?
The, the interior probably would be a wood frame construction.
Wood frame, including floors?
Including floors, yes.
Okay. Would the wood frame construction be designed in such a way to actually support the, the full green roof?
Yes. It, it would be. What, what happens is, is we tend to over-design the floors and, and really for space, you know, because if you're doing a wood truss, you know, it's, you know, it's made out of smaller members, so, so there's not a lot of difference in cost between a 14-inch truss or an 18-inch truss or whatever. So, we'll typically do an 18-inch truss, but we do it for ease of running mechanicals through the unit. Now, typically the, the framing will run side to side on the unit, so, so it doesn't run from the corridor to the outside, it'll run side to side. And so, we've got this, you know, 18-inch truss and oftentimes it's only spanning 12 to 14 feet because we use all the interior walls as, as load bearing. So, so we, we have not designed the structure for the green roof, I, I don't anticipate, you know, an issue, but it, you know, it has to be designed. When we get down to the concrete, you know, what we'll, what we'll be designing there, you know, is a transfer slab. So, so, you know, as opposed to taking point loads down, you know, that, that slab, which is probably going to be, you know, 10 inches thick if it's cast or 12 if it's post-tension, we'll essentially be able to kind of take the loads that come down on it that, that, again, are, aren't dispersed at very great dimensions. And, and that, that same concrete floor creates a three, three-hour horizontal separation so, so that, that garage is a full three-hour separation, you know, before you start the residential units above.
What is the material around the, the two levels of garage on the exterior of the building?
Uh, brick.
Brick. Okay.
Do you want to open up to a couple of elevation?
No, not yet.
Okay.
Your plan behind you, right there, I'm kind of looking at that, I'm, I'm a little concerned about good light getting into the north-facing units, specifically inside the, uh, the, the two H2 areas and along that, that elevation as well.
That elevation and then-
Right, understanding the, the perceived height of the building. Can you expand on that a little?
Well, the, you know, the, you know, the courtyard, you know, you know, again, we'll use light materials and, and I think we actually get a better opportunity for light to bounce around the courtyard, you know, and so if the, if the sun is hitting the other side of the courtyard and we use a lighter material and we use, you know, similar reflective materials, you know, on the deck, you know, we'll actually get a fair amount of light bouncing around. So, so, you know, I think that, you know, that, you know, the, the north face, I'm, I'm not sure we can do anything about it, you know, I mean, you know, we actually probably have a better light quality, you know, inside with the lights bouncing around.
Actually, can you flip over to a rendering? I find that the, although we're seeing the renderings, or we're seeing the elevations as, in these views, it will be interesting actually in reality because we'll never see the bottom of the building, because this actually, we'll, we'll see a lot of the top of the building. And I'm not too sure if your elevations show us any screening for the mechanical systems or what's happening with the green roof on top, because I think that's the thing that most of the, the town will actually see is the upper edge of this building, the roof of this building.
Yeah, well, so, on, on the drawings, and I think there was a question, you know, we have a, you know, we're, we're suggesting a five-foot parapet. So, the majority of the, you know, those, those condensers are below that and then based on the line of sight, I don't think you'd see anything and, like, we, we haven't designed the rooftop units that'll handle the corridors, but, you know, but they'll, they'll be internal. So, you know, I don't, I don't think visually you would see it from the outside. The, so these, these are our renderings, just, just so you know, that, you know, a photo simulation is in process. So, so, so we've walked down the street, we've taken about 50 photographs, you know, all, all along the way, you know, for instance, so, so the photo simulation is due in approximately two weeks. So, so you will see, you know, professional rendering of this as you drove by and we're looking over the Mercedes dealership, you know, in, in multiple views so, so that, you know, you'll see it exactly in context.
The, the center corridor actually behind your canopy where the, you have the garage at the first level?
Yes.
That's common space there?
Right here?
No, the floor is above that, yeah, where you, yeah, that's common space?
Uh, yeah, it's, it's actually part of the corridor, you know, so when you, you know, I call it the bridge a little bit, but, but all it is is a corridor and the main, you know, the center elevators and stairwell are there. So, every time you kind of come up out of the stairway or the elevator, you know, you're able to kind of look through and, you know, I think it'll have a, you know, you know, great sunlight and, you know, you know, in, you know, in view and I think it'll, you know, feel better in the circulation.
Right, and, but it'll be continuously lit at night?
Well, it'll, it'll be, it'll be lit on the inside, yes.
Okay. Can you explain your aligning program for the exterior of the building?
Actually, the, so the, the photometric study's being done, so if we could, you know, so, you know, we've, you know, we have, you know, kind of a low lighting plan, you know, all the way around, but it would be easier, you know, we're working with Ted and, but the photometrics are almost done.
Okay. The openings into the garage, what covers those openings?
I'm not sure if you can, if you could pick up, but, you know, you know, we just want to use like a, like a, we want to keep it open, but we're going to use kind of like a metal mesh.
Metal mesh, okay. Thank you.
Is it ventilated? Is the garage ventilated?
Yes, um, you know, we haven't gone through our full calculations yet, so, so, you know, by my estimation, that, you know, the middle level's got, got ventilation all the way around, so it's probably going to be deemed what we call a open parking garage, but there are the lower level, you know, and probably the, 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 the upper, the two half levels are probably partially buried, so, so we'll have CO exhaust in those, you know, and, and exhaust fans. So, you know, you know, briefly if I may, you know, again, the, you know, the photo simulation is in process, so, so, you know, he does a terrific job, so you'll see exactly, you know, you know, what it looks like. We, we did look at, at multiple concepts for the building, you know, what it was going to look like. You know, the first time I drew it, I drew a very, you know, kind of traditional building and, and then, you know, as we studied it, you know, you know, what we found, not, not only kind of is it kind of what the market is looking for, you know, you know, you know, what the people are looking for renting in terms of something a little bit more contemporary, but, but I, I think we're able to break the building down a little bit more, you know, you know, in scale. So, you know, but, but as to the materials... Here's the lower east side, you know, as, you know, that, that's the, the, you know, one access into the lower east side and then into the center beyond, but, so, the, the base material, you know, is, is brick. And then, once we leave the garage, you know, this lighter material, you know, is also brick. So, you know, I, I haven't done a calculation on what percentage, you know, but, but, you know, certainly, you know, 40% of the exterior almost is, is, you know, is, is brick. You know, the, you know, the gray materials are cementaceous board and, and we're going to use them in two different manners, you know, so we're going to use them in a flat panel with a metal reveal, you know, it's kind of a very attractive look and you can break the, the scale of a flat wall down and, you know, and then, you know, you'll, you'll see some browner patterns, you know, where, where they have cementaceous boards that we can use in a horizontal line in different colors, you know, to, to, to kind of, you know, enhance some of the, the features, you know, the, you know, the corner, the center, you know, or, or the other far corner. All the railings, you know, will be, you know, aluminum rail as, as, as will be the, you know, the metal copings. And, and again, you know, you know, every unit, you know, you know, has a balcony, you know, this, this shaft in between those, those balconies are kind of, you know, common exterior spaces where the mechanical equipment will be, will be taken. So, what we want to do is reassess those back so that we could get some, you know, some recessed areas and less activity, you know, you know, on the building and then, and then, and then more glass and some lighter color and begin to repeat that to hopefully kind of get a little bit of undulation on the building. The, you know, it's a, you know, it's, it's a, you know, it's, you know, the, you know, the building's got some width to it and, you know, we wanted to work to see if we couldn't break the scale down and I, you know, you know, and, and I think we're making good progress on that and, and again, you'll see a higher resolution with the, the exact, with the professional photo simulation.
In the building code, how many stories is this building? In the, in the Connecticut Building Code, not zoning, how many stories is this building?
Uh, it is either six or seven.
Okay, and can you relate that to the allowable height in the building code for an R2 use, which limits you to four stories unless it, with the type 3, unless it's sprinkled, then you get one extra story?
Yeah, so, so-
The way I read the code, this would have to be a type 1.
If you, no, if you, a couple of things, you know, when you, you don't take just the U- When you, you don't take just the use, you take the use and the construction type, so it's kind of a sliding scale.
At the chart.
Yeah, and then, so, when you look at that, what happens is when you create the three-hour horizontal separation, then what you do is you analyze the building that sits on top of it, and analyze the building that sits underneath it. So, if you're allowed to go five stories, you go five stories above the three-hour horizontal separation.
For the record, what section of the code are you referring to, please?
Table 503.
So, in the Building Code, Chapter Five kind of defines height and area relative to the use group or the construction type. And as a development team, you decide, gee, I want to be taller, so I'm going to go to a type I or type II construction, which allows more height or area. Or, gee, it costs too much, I'm going to drop it down, I want to use a cheaper construction. So, you decide how to put those components together, but Chapter Five gives you the parameters to work with it.
I didn't see the provision that you could stack them.
Yeah, it's...
Because it's an overall height based on story, not a unit.
If you look at Section 508 of the Connecticut Building Code, it gives you the special construction sections. And so, it tells you when you have these combination of buildings, and when you do these horizontal separations, you're allowed to do this. So, we're allowed to build X amount of stories as defined by that use group over the horizontal separation.
The top of the garage slab. So, what are you doing? The garage slab is going...
The building does the same.
So, that's a three-hour also?
Yes, yes.
Any other questions?
You're going to provide gas for the units?
You're going to provide gas to the units for utilities as well?
Yes, we talked about gas for each one of the units. It's kind of typically what we do, although the electric units are becoming far more efficient. So, we're not going to, usually we don't make that selection just yet, but we're not going to leave it out.
Would it be gas to the appliances as well?
It depends on that, it depends on that decision. If we don't, if we run gas for the HVAC unit, we'll typically run gas. So, you at least get to make that decision. But if it goes electric, utility-based, then it'll be all-electric.
Does the building have a generator?
The building will probably have a generator. I mean, we haven't gone through all the nuances of everything in the Building Code, but probably the building will have a generator. At a minimum, the generator will run the elevators, because when you get above a certain height, the elevator has to function as an exit for a handicapped person. So, in case of emergency, that elevator has to run. So, at a minimum, it'll run the elevators if you need any other life-safety issue. Right now, it looks like the water pressure's good, but if we needed a fire pump for the sprinkler system, we'd run that.
And that would actually be located outside?
No, we'd put it in the building. Down in the garages on both of our corners, we've got areas to do that. We recently just put a, just down the street in Portchester, we have the generator inside because a good bit of the site was used up.
Okay.
Mariner?
Castle.
And there's no laundry in the building, correct?
Every unit has their own laundry, yes.
Oh, they have their own, okay.
Sometimes, we haven't got to that far in the program, sometimes we may provide a small laundry facility somewhere, so that, usually, you're in a unit, you've got smaller washer-dryers, if you want to wash your comforter. So, when we get deeper into it, there could be a spot or two where there's a few larger machines.
Mr. Maitland, are you going to inquire about how we got to 355 units?
He said he wasn't the person, that was my first question.
Maybe I'll ask a question or two, and then you can...
No, I already asked him, he said he wasn't the decider, and the other gentleman before him weren't the deciders.
Nobody was the decider.
So, we'll see who the decider is.
I would like to know if you designed this project taking into account 830G from the beginning, or was there any contemplation of complying with our zoning regulations in Greenwich?
You know, honestly, I'm not an 830G person. I was given a program, gee, we'd like to get X amount of units, and we went through various schemes, does it fit this way, does it fit that way? So, nobody approached me and said, "It's 830G." It's like, we need X number of units and X number of parking spaces.
All right, so you were given a project that defined the number of units and the parking?
Yes.
And asked to build...
Well, we asked to design it, and, you know, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Sullivan, do you know what the total occupancy of the building is?
Well, so, there's 355 units, so, I mean, you know, I'm not a population person, so I mean, if it was 2.5 times that, you know, it has nothing to do with how many people are actually in there on a day-to-day basis. The Building Code will define how many people could be there, and we've got to make sure that the doors and the stairwells and everything functions that way.
Right, I understand that. I'm just actually thinking, what would the actual capacity of the whole building be when everybody's home at night and staff is there, that kind of thing? I understand the egress requirements and the occupancy compared to that, but I'm actually looking for how many people will actually be in the building when everybody's home.
All right, so, there's some, I think I have some spreadsheet information that I've used to give you, and I've got every unit broken down, every size of every unit in place. So, I'd be happy to kind of apply a population count to that.
That would be great.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to now introduce Joseph Verstig, who is our Fire Prevention Expert, and he, I think, will be relatively brief, subject to your questions.
Mr. Chairman, just a point of information. We envision that there will be an opportunity for the public to speak tonight. There was an incident with inline wetline, we waited for three hours, and then we couldn't because of exigencies.
We don't turn the lights off till everybody's gone.
Just wait till one or two o'clock.
Yep.
Thank you.
I believe this is their last person.
Oh, I'm fascinated, I don't mind.
No, you will get, you'll get your chance.
I believe.
Well, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, patient public. My name is Joe Verstig. I'm the principal of Verstig Associates. We're a Torrington-based independent code consulting firm specializing in building code, accessibility, and fire safety code, as well as fire safety matters. My expertise and qualifications are attached to my written comments, and I would apologize, I think two of you might be missing the comments.
I'm not sure.
I have two extras.
I'll take it, because I don't remember seeing them.
Okay, if you don't have them, we can, we have them here.
Give a copy to our...
Just the staff, they'll...
Need them?
We can take a copy when you're done with your, yep, or now it's fine.
Can I just see what it looks like, because I don't remember?
Thank you.
I apologize, I had eight, and I guess what we handed in was six, two were on the bottom. So, anyway, you have them all. It's not my intent to go into the comments very deeply, I'll just briefly summarize them and hit on the topics that I think you may find relevant. We're going to talk about three topics today. Building construction, construction of the building, and some of you did touch on that with some detailed questions, and actually looked in the Building Code. So, if you have questions on that, feel free. Fire protection systems that will be in the building, and the probably of concern would be the fire department vehicle access. From the standpoint of building construction, as the designer has told you, that this is going to be a type III building, and it's going to fall within the category of what we call special construction, Section 508 of the Building Code, which is pedestal buildings, which are very common, where you build a fire-resistant concrete garage, and then you're allowed to build other occupancies on top of it, subject to the rules for that particular occupancy. So, it's that new math. It's not a seven-story building, it's four over two, or four over three. And that was, the way the Building Code looked at it in the 1960s, the way it evolved, and it's progressively gotten more and more refined for other occupancies. It really started out for just residential over parking, because there was a problem putting residential downtown and not having parking for it. So, what they did was they put the, I'm sorry?
Aren't there five floors of residence?
Yeah. So, what they typically did was build an entire city block of parking out of a concrete one garage, and then they put the residential units on top of it.
But in this case, you said four over two, and...
Yeah, you're five over one, it was just specifically in this one.
Yeah, oh, it was just a manner of speaking, but it's still five stories above the garage.
Right, so you wouldn't look at it as a six-story building, by Building Code perspective, you would look at it as five over one, or if it was seven stories, you would look at it as six over one. It's just the new math.
Yeah.
Okay? And that's for purposes of applying the Building Code requirements for types of construction and other safety features. So, we have independently reviewed this project, and the construction classifications, as well as the materials and methods that are going to be used within the building, are in fact going to be in strict compliance with the Connecticut State Building Code, the Connecticut Fire Safety Code, and the Connecticut Fire Prevention Code, all three of which are administrative regulations of state agencies that are adopted pursuant to Connecticut general statutes. Compliance with these documents is ensured by statutorily mandated reviews of the construction documents, will certainly be developed later on, if in fact this project is approved and clears this phase. Construction documents, you only have about seven or eight, maybe sixteen pages before you now for zoning purposes. The documents that would be developed for construction documents, probably are going to be in the range of two to 300 sheets of drawings, as well as project manuals and specifications that will contain the details for every aspect of the building. Statutorily, your building official will review those upon application of a building permit, your fire marshal will review them upon application of a building permit, and when they determine substantial compliance, they will then issue the permit. Typically, they have thirty days to do that review, they can ask for assistance from the state building official and state fire marshal. Once the permit is issued, there are statutorily mandated inspections, staged inspections at certain points to make sure things are compliant before they're covered up. For example, they would look at the footings before the concrete is poured in, they would look at the rebar before the concrete is poured in, they would look at the wiring and the plumbing, everything inside the walls before sheathed. And then they sign off on it if it's compliant, and if not, they make required corrections. So, compliance with all these documents is ensured through the building official and the fire marshal in the community, as well as assistance from the state building official and state fire marshal if they so request. Now, this compliance with these codes not only ensures a safe building environment, but also provides for the health and safety of the occupants, as well as the surrounding community, and for firefighter and emergency responders. Now, you say that's a very nice statement, but if you've read the Building Code like you have, in Chapter One, the preamble tells you that that's exactly what compliance with this Building Code is about. So, when the developers of the Building Code sit down at the International Code Council, which I'm a member of, the National Fire Protection Association, which I'm a member of, and they sit down and they write these documents for construction type, for egress, for ventilation, for light, for every aspect of the Building Code, all thirty-four chapters, their scope is, do the requirements that we are writing fulfill the mission statement of the code? And that does it provide for the health and safety and welfare of the occupants, the environment, as well as emergency responders. And the membership votes on that, Connecticut then takes those documents, adopts them as an administrative regulation, changes that are uniquely Connecticut. There's input from the architectural field, the engineering field, the public, as well as the fire marshal and building official communities through public hearings that are required by legislation. With regards to fire protection, it was mentioned that this building will be fully sprinkled. Now, this, the sprinkler system that is in this building is going to be a little bit different. You've probably heard here in Fairfield County that there's been much ado about a sprinkler system called 13R. Are you familiar with that terminology?
Yes.
It is a sprinkler system that was developed in the 80s for low-rise residential buildings. We always had NFPA 13. This was the standard that was developed in 1895. It's the oldest codified standard that the National Fire Protection Association has on its books. And the question was, do you know how to put out fires in a single-family home? And the NFPA 13 committee said, "Sure, we know how to do that." And then the question was, before the fire gets hot enough and reaches a point, where people inside the room die? The committee went, "No, we don't know how to do that." So, based on a whole series of testing, actual field burns, we now know at what threshold we need to put the fire out. The problem was, the technology on the market couldn't handle it, because the sprinklers we have were huge masses of metal that sat there at the ceiling that collected heat, and it took so much heat for these things to react that the fire in the room got very large. So, the intent of the sprinkler system was never to put the fire out, it was to cool the atmosphere in the room and wet the hell out of everything that wasn't burning, and what was burning eventually would burn out, and that was the philosophy. Well, that's not acceptable in residential occupancies. So, through a lot of testing, they came up with a sprinkler system for single-family homes. Very lightweight materials that respond and react very, very quickly to heat, and put water on the fire much, much sooner. And as a result, the standard focus, the mission of that standard, has changed from controlling the fire to actually extinguishing the fire. So, there was a void in the middle. You had these heavy industrial 13 systems, and you had these ones for residential occupancies, and with a little bit of adjustment, they turned them into sprinkler systems for residential occupancies, up to including four stories in height. Now, there's been a lot of controversy about those, because they don't require sprinklers in attics, they don't require sprinklers in basements, there's a lot of exceptions of where you don't put sprinklers. This building exceeds that threshold, I'm sorry?
How do you do five stories?
Yeah, it would be four stories, and that's been the question of, where do I count? Where do I begin to count? So, if I have four stories of residential over a parking garage, am I four over one? And can I use that system, or am I a five-story? Now, Connecticut's clarified it, and said, "In this type of building that you see before you, if it's four stories of residential over a parking garage, then you can use the residential sprinkler in the residential part, and you can use the full sprinkler 13 system throughout." We are precluded from using the 13R simply because our residential portions of the building exceed four stories. They're all five, so we have to use 13. Now, the benefit from a fire protection standpoint is that every nook and cranny's going to have a sprinkler. The only area that's not going to have a sprinkler is going to be the bathroom. The bathroom within each one of the apartments is exempt.
Mr. Verstig, is that how you pronounce it?
Yes.
In the letter that you received, that Malone and McBroom received from Aquarian, it says that the fire hydrant demand at 1,500 gallons at 20 PSI can be met, but it says that they did not submit the required sprinkler system demand, and this is a pretty extensive sprinkler system. So, Aquarian can meet fire hydrant, irrigation, and daily demand, but they haven't told us whether they can meet fire hydrant and sprinkler system concurrent at the same time at this point. They have not answered, because that was not submitted to them. It seems strange, it was such an extensive sprinkler system, that data was not submitted to Aquarian.
Yeah, when you look at it from the standpoint of the size of the building and the sheer numbers of individual sprinklers that would be there, it looks like quite a bit of water. I have to tell you though...
How much, what do you figure, well, I guess you wouldn't run it all at the same time, but what would your maximum flow? That's not really a question for us, honestly. You guys have to give this to, somebody from Malone and McBroom has to give this to Aquarian, and Aquarian has to tell us if they can do it. I think that's way beyond, we just need to know that this great thing that you're saying you're putting in is going to have water in it.
Well, I can give you the answer, if you'd like.
Well, not without Aquarian saying.
Well, Aquarian's data shows that there's 3,400 gallons per minute available at 20 PSI.
At 20 PSI, yes, I saw that.
Now, that's fine. The fire flow that's required for a fire in the residential occupancy, remember that typically, statistically, I should say, that in eighty-seven to ninety-five percent of the residential fires, one sprinkler activates and extinguishes it.
Yeah, but sir, you can explain it to me, but honestly, we just need the letter from Aquarian. What we need to know, I mean, you...
What we need to know, I mean, you and I could be on the same page-
Right.
But unless Aquarian tells us it works,
Okay.
That's all we need. So you don't need to explain it to me in terms of, I saw the numbers, but I don't know what, I mean, you could tell me now, but I know who you got to make happy.
Yeah, that's typically calculated at the point in time the sprinkler system's designed.
So I think when you guys come back, well, but-
The rough calculation would be, a fire in the residential portion, the maximum demand's going to be two hundred fifty gallons a minute. In the garage, it's going to be about five hundred gallons a minute. The worst-case demand that we have to design for are the stand pipes in the stairs, and there are going to be a thousand gallons a minute.
But do you have enough pressure?
Well, and that's the issue of, if there's insufficient pressure, I can make pressure, I can't make water.
Right.
So I add a pump, and I have my pressure.
Over and over again, the questions we're asking you tonight is, a development of this magnitude, the infrastructure available to support it without a danger to the surrounding community or the, or the residents. Aquarian's letter, that's, you know, you, I don't think we need to understand this kind of detail, honestly.
Okay.
At least I don't-
But we offered it, and just so it was clarified-
Well, I'd love to read it if you want to submit it, I'll read it, but I think tonight it's eleven o'clock, the public's waiting to speak.
My only comment is, you need a fire pump, then you're going to need a generator, and we need to see the generator on the site plan. Da-da-da-da-da-da.
Right, and it was talked with the architect, there's room, there's spaces in the building, they had the generator within, as well as the fire pump, if it's needed. So in addition to the sprinkler, any other question?
I have a question.
Sure.
It's my understanding that our fire trucks in Greenwich have the capability to go up three stories and not more. Is that correct?
Uh, your fire trucks, you have a ladder truck that is ninety-five feet, it's a Pierce, has a ninety-five feet aerial extension. Uh, the roof of this building is only about eighty-four, so depending on truck placement, ninety-five-foot ladder, you know, you get optimum at, at vertical, nobody operates it that way, and depending on the angle that I approach and where I park my truck, it lessens, but you should be able to reach the roof-
We have one-
In all cases.
Are you saying we have one of those in Greenwich?
Yes.
And where is that located? What fire station is that located?
I don't have that information off the top.
Because we have a, um, a system by which the fire trucks go out.
Yes.
So I have no idea where that truck is.
Right.
And I, am I correct that all the, the other trucks only go up three stories?
Yeah, typically, the engine, the engines, uh, what you would consider pumpers, uh, would carry a thirty-five-foot ladder.
Right.
Uh, and, and again, that maybe goes to about the third floor.
And so, um, when you're talking about these two different sprinkler systems, my understanding that what is going to go in this building is the older kind because that's what you have to do by, by law?
Yes, the more extensive.
So it's the, um, it's the, takes a lot more heat to make it turn on?
No, no, I, I'm sorry, that, I probably didn't finish that, that comment. We did do the technology or the research to find out the residential sprinklers and design those, how they activate much, much quicker. Once they were developed, they were then required in all residential occupancies to have those quick-response or residential-type sprinklers. So they all go off very, very fast.
So, so this will not be the old-fashioned-
Exactly. Yes, sorry if I made that misconception. In addition to the sprinkler system, this building is required to have stand pipes. Now, stand pipes are the steel pipes that are in the stairways that the fire department would hook up their hose. Once you have a floor over thirty feet above the grade level, um, the code writers, in conjunction with the fire departments, think it's unreasonable to stretch a hose from a fire truck all the way up to the third, the fourth, the fifth, or the eightieth floor. So to assist them, they put the stand pipes in, and this is nothing unlike, uh, your fire department's already familiar with in some of your, your six, seven-story buildings now. It just affords them the ability to get the water from the ground up to the floor, uh, through a system. In addition, the fire alarm system will be located throughout the building. It'll be initiated manually should someone see a fire. Anytime a sprinkler activates, that will also initiate the fire alarm system. That will sound an audible alarm as well as visual alarm throughout the building, and will also be transmitted off-site to a monitoring station such as ADT or Wells Fargo, who then will turn, in turn, call the fire department.
Excuse me?
I'm sorry, yes.
Uh, you started your presentation with the, uh, with the statement that this will be a short.
Yeah.
And can I hold you to that?
Sure, sure.
We're, it's getting late, a lot of people want to talk.
Okay.
So I think we understand that you're going to comply with the codes for the sprinklers, the stand pipes, and so forth.
And the last topic would be fire department vehicle access. There's a rule in the fire prevention code that you got to be able to get the fire truck within fifty feet of an exterior door. We have several of those. And beyond that point, not that you have to reach all sides of the building with a fire truck, you're allowed to walk no more than four hundred and fifty feet in a sprinkler building to reach the back. So on Main Street, if you parked in front, it's perfectly acceptable to walk around the back. In addition, with road widths and turning radii and, and the, the road surface capable supporting the truck, we are totally compliant with the fire department vehicle access requirements within the fire prevention code.
But you have, you say that's only on three sides? What happens to the fourth side?
The fourth side you're allowed to walk around.
All right, got it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm, I don't want to keep asking him questions, sir.
Is that it?
That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Anyone else?
That concludes-
So we never did find the person who-
This may, when I was going to address that, but if you want, we can do it after, or I can make it now?
Well, I, I think that's going to be an important part of what we may be hearing later on. It's, uh, we might as well get to it.
We're losing your, you're, we're losing people as it gets later and they have to go to work, but go.
No, let's hear you.
Well, there's no magic answer to it. You're looking as to, uh, who, who stood up and said, I want three fifty-five. So the reality is, this is being-
What I want to understand is what thinking-
I'm, that's what-
Went into the placement of a building of this size and this magnitude in an RA-one building zone in the town of Greenwich?
And I understood your question in context, but you were also at various times, and not just yourself, saying, who decided it? So I was trying to answer your question, instead of saying, it's Mr. Smith or Mr. Jones, I was going to try to give you a specific answer.
I just, I want the answer that, if you're the one that's going to answer that question, I'd, I'd appreciate that.
It's not my decision, but it is my answer.
Okay.
So, the, the, the decision was made by the Carrero family winded partnership and the Post-Road Iron Works, the Gasparini and the Carrero family. They didn't do it by taking a dartboard and throwing a number, if that's the implication behind some of the questions. At the end of the day, they did, they did a full analysis with the benefit of all of the experts you've heard and several other, other experts that they've consulted with. The, the key questions for them, and you may or may not disagree with the ultimate conclusion, what is the proper site utilization? What are the available utilities? What would be good architecture? And what is the marketability of the unit? I mean, at the end of the day, regardless of who does what or wants to do whatever, the question is, will the market be receptive? So, could it be bigger? Yes. Could it be smaller? Yes. But it's not as though there's only a single answer to this, and we've said this to staff. We think that this was, and I say we, the Carrero family, who've owned this property for ninety years, made the decision with all the input that the three hundred and fifty-five units was a fully well-designed, well-positioned, yes, different than what you would normally see in the, the town of Greenwich. The reality is, that's why we're here under eight thirty G. You've got a shortage of affordable housing. Well, we can chuckle all you want. You've got a shortage of affordable housing, you've tried to address it. We're addressing it under eight thirty J. It's not an arbitrary number. It's a designed number, designed not to maximize profit, not, not designed to intrude or interfere with or disrupt the character of Greenwich, but rather very simply-
Somehow the solution does all of those. If it was not the intention of it, I don't understand, because you, you have just kind of listed what it does to the town of Greenwich and the character. You used the word yourself, the character of the town of Greenwich.
Well, I, I certainly had the benefit of input listening to your work session, and so as to what the character is of the community as a whole, that's a different subject, and that's certainly not my job to try to suggest. The question is, the character in terms of affordable housing has a certain element to it. Affordable housing is for those who cannot afford a single-family McMansion.
We just approved a project that has affordable housing of two units in it, so why isn't that appropriate for this site?
I don't know if I understand your question.
You said that has to, it has to solve the affordable housing issue.
Affordable housing under your task force, under your own plan of conservation and development, and some of your own efforts, is a desirable goal.
No, but what I'm saying to you is, we've had projects like that before this commission, which are not three hundred and fifty-five units. They are, in fact, much more modest approaches.
Well, I think-
Why wouldn't that have worked on this site?
Well, if you start from the premise that size per se is bad, perhaps that's a different issue for you as a matter of planning and, and, and the commission.
Actually-
So I, I'm sorry.
No, we're not starting with that premise. You're making an assumption about what our-
I'm just listening to what I'm listening to.
Okay, well, let me answer that. We have been told, and I participated in our affordable ta- housing task force, um, we have had a lot of work on it, and we have heard over and over again from both our housing authority, as well as those task force members, that you are better to scatter smaller developments around town that contain affordable housing and that integrate with the character of the community. And that's what we've been told by the people working on affordable housing. So it isn't that we by default think that big is bad. Um, we live in a pretty big country. I mean, you know, we can't think that, but, um, it is what we've been hearing and what has come before us, and so one of the questions we're asking you is why is your assumption different than what we have had recommended to us?
I think with all due respect, there's a confusion between your housing authority as affordable and what we're calling affordable. Housing, your housing authority has a multi-year waitlist, both for, uh, for all sorts of your, your section-eight housing, as well as your senior listing. Yeah, if I recall the last statistics, you were somewhere between two and three years. That's your housing authority. That's not what we're talking about here as affordable. What we're talking about here is market rate housing, housing that fits in the qualitative aspects of the area in which we intend to go, which is here. We're on a commercial area, we're on a, a major thoroughfare, West Putnam, Post-Road, whatever.
Residential area. It is almost entirely R-one.
It is immediately contiguous, and I didn't create these zones. Someone in this commission, at some point, your predecessors did. You have RA zones next to GB zones. No one, as a matter of good planning, would, would say that's a good way to go.
It is four point six-six acres of RA-one and point three-one acres of GB. It is residential.
It's residential, and it's therefore eligible for the proposal we've made before you. We didn't design or zone RA next to a GB zone. So whether there should have or shouldn't have been a transition zone was not our decision. We're dealing or playing with the cards that we were dealt. We're eligible for-
There has to be some decision, because I, I just finished explaining that we just completed, uh, an eight thirty G housing project, a very small one, that had, I believe, four units in it? Five, six, whatever, doesn't make any difference, four, five, six, and, and, and some office space. Now, that seemed to work for that developer, so why wouldn't a more modest project have worked on this particular site?
Well, that starts with the premise, the smaller is better, and I'm not saying that three fifty-five is the absolute number.
No, but that-
I, I'm not trying to insult anyone, but you're saying, why did you go to three fifty-five? For a lot of good reasons, which we're articulating. To some extent, it's clear there's a disagreement, or at least a reluctance to accept that premise, but we are certainly going to reevaluate your comments, and there can be an interactive dialogue. We just received your comments, not your comments, staff comments, five hundred and forty-six pages at three o'clock on Friday, so-
That's when we got them too.
That's when we got them.
And I'm, the difference is, you're asking questions, and I'm trying to answer them. So, uh, my weekend was a lot of fun, uh, aside from a few NCA games. It was reading a lot of those materials, which presumably you did as well. I'm not criticizing anyone, but we're trying to absorb the data that we got back. There are good examples of that, both in terms of fire and sewer, that we didn't get the benefit of and really haven't fully responded to you.
Let me ask another question. In, in the overall evaluation of this site, uh, there are, uh, three kind of major natural, uh, parts of the site not impacted by the resident, uh, the industrial buildings that have been built there. Wouldn't a better approach to this site have been to try to put the housing, concentrate that in the area that's already disturbed with the industrial buildings, and try to preserve these open spaces around the site that have got these trees in it and hills? I mean, really, a wonderful site.
Well-
Opposed to just lopping off the head and just, and doing that, it just seems inappropriate. In addition, obviously not even close to complying with any of the zoning regulations.
Well, obviously, yet, yet again, you, you know why we're here, and the premise, jurisdictional premise under which we are. I'm certainly not going to disregard your comments. We're certainly absorbing, digesting, and we'll think about any at all, but, uh, I, I simply come back to the, the core premise that it was designed with a composite group of retained experts by the Carrero-Gasparini family.
But it all started from a single program, that's my point, and, and the program was not, the program was, was a number and not, and, and the experts put skin around the number.
No, we didn't start with a number.
Of course.
No, I mean, if-
Every program given to an architect has a number of units that you want to have.
But the architect came later to the party. Uh, if, what, what you, what you've got, the first part of it had to be the site analysis. What could the site, in terms of access, utilities, the whole configuration, what could it accept?
Preservation of the natural character of the site considered in that.
That's part of it, and you prioritize the various concerns that are involved in reaching a site determination. It's, you, you wouldn't want to build something that, even if you, even if you said, go ahead with three hundred and fifty-five units, and the market wouldn't receive it, that would be a rather foolish business investment, no matter who did it. Carrero family as, as investors and builders, or anyone else who would be going out to it. So it's a combination of aesthetics, marketability, architecture. We didn't, I wanted to make this point clear, because I, I still get some sense of it. Mr. Carrera didn't wake up one morning and say, I want three hundred and fifty-five units, go get them. This, this was an interactive process that took a period of seven, eight months at an absolute minimum to prepare the applications before you. You're clearly having some difficulty with the total number. You've given some suggestions to it.
Height, the number, the non-preservation of the natural resources on the site, yes.
Understood, and where they balance out, and whether they rise to the health and safety issues, which are the jurisdictional predicate for your activities, are open questions, but I'm not going to-
That's right.
No, and I-
They certainly impact the general welfare of the community, and I believe that's also a standard to which we can use.
I think I'd probably be not, at this point, of a mind to engage in a dialogue with you. I think you want to get the, the residents to speak and try to answer your question.
Before you do that, just one thing, go ahead, Andy, and then I'll-
Did you look at the site when you started out, under our current multifamily regulations? And how many units you could have put on this five-acre site with our current regulations, and then with the tools available to the commission to increase it to a point nine FAR, an additional story?
The, the short answer is, some, some analysis was done on that, certainly not by myself.
So that, to me, would have been your starting point of number of units that should have been on this site, and then it, it grew, because I believe we've kind of done it internally, that was around a hundred and ten, we felt. And we're just trying to, and I think you're hearing where the questions are going, if it's roughly around one-ten, you know, we're trying to find a balance between affordable and, and, and a hundred and ten versus three hundred and forty, and-
Yeah, I just, before the one-ten gets printed up and put into newspaper articles, I, I think it's much closer to eighty under the RMF, so just-
And just to, to come back, because I think you misunderstood part of what I said to you. Following the writing of our last plan of conservation and development, the town organized several task forces to look at implementation of some of the key objectives in our POZB. Yes.
Yes.
And those task forces were ongoing and resulted in new regulations in certain areas and policy, but it was during that effort, that three-year effort, that our Director of Community Development brought us expert speakers who talked about all kinds of affordable housing being integrated into the existing character of a community, and how the research shows that that is a more successful approach for long-range integration. That's what she told us. I'm sure we can find the documents if we need to, but that's what we were hearing. And, um, that's what we're asking you, is we're trying to strike the balance between the character of our community, the load on the infrastructure of our community that this is, is presenting, and we've given you all of our infrastructure questions, and achieving our goal of affordable housing. And those are, it's finding that right balance and having you tell us how you got to the numbers and how you developed that, because we know there has to be a balance somewhere that gives us more affordable housing, but addresses our infrastructure and helps us preserve open space and our community character.
And I appreciate your comments, the insights that you provide, and certainly comments that we will weigh as we reflect upon what we'll be doing and saying as we move forward to the next chapter of this. I think I've probably taken more time than you anticipated, and I know that the neighbors want to speak their piece.
I just want to bring your attention to, I went through the principal cases that have come down in the last 15 years, perhaps 20, on this subject. And I was looking at what kind of statistical data there was in that in terms of lot coverage and density. And it was an interesting process, because I think of groupings like the Avalon cases, of which there are a number. There was nothing like the kind of density that you're proposing here. One of the Avalons was a total of 119 units. There's a Riverbend Associates case, 363 acres, on which they put 371 units. These numbers don't look anything like the numbers you're trying to propose to us. There just isn't the density that... And when you talk about, what do poor people need? What do affordable housing...
We're not saying poor people.
Affordable housing people, qualifiers, are apparently looking for houses. They're looking for small residential units that they can own. That's what these cases reflect.
Respectfully, I disagree. I think at this...
But why are they there? Why did they litigate them?
Well, I can give you a lot of reasons why people litigate, but I don't think that's where we should be going tonight. You're extrapolating principles that you anticipate as being reflected by certain cases you've read. I will tell you that, as a practical matter, the cases are fact-sensitive. The entire program is fact-sensitive. What we're talking about here is not what happened in, fill in the blank, any one of another 30 or 40 municipalities.
The suburbs that are in this half of the state, Wilton, Simsbury, Newtown, East Lime...
No, I think one of my partners perhaps put together a memo that summarized those cases, but it doesn't stand for the principle that you're articulating.
I'm not saying it reflects facts consistently that show nothing like the kind of density you're talking about. People are rational. These people are trying to make money in this business, and they are producing affordable housing that is rational in terms of its density.
It's interesting, because having presented a number of these applications in different communities, the usual theme is, no matter what the number is, it's too much, and it's driven by greed or money. The reality of all those cases is, well, that's where you're coming, not coming from. But the facts that you're quoting from in other communities...
We're listening.
I'm trying to be respectful.
I know, it's not us. It's in the back, please. If I could ask the audience...
Well, you should be.
You need to be. Please refrain. We have enough intensity going here without getting any help.
Being news by the end.
No, please.
Shh.
It's not amusing.
It is.
No, please.
We're on the record, people. Let's just please be courteous. Thank you.
With all the respect to the cases you cited, they reflect other projects. I can cite projects yet again in which we obtained larger numbers in other communities. The cases may or may not be reported. Respectfully, I don't think what the densities were in certain, a select number of reported cases, is the issue. The issue is, what is this site? And it goes back to what I started with, when, I said a few minutes ago, it's probably 15 minutes ago. What can the site accommodate? What is the marketability? What is the architecture? What are the utilities? Now, we've got a composite formula, and it is a balancing act. You're suggesting that, on your view, at least to this point, that the balance is skewed. We're going to listen to you. We're going to think about it. All I'm trying to convey to you back is, we didn't pick 355 arbitrarily. We thought it was an internally justifiable number, and we will, with the benefit of this input, revisit it. We may change, we may not. But it's certainly not an issue that I'm going to disregard. It would be foolish and just inappropriate for us to disregard your comments.
Okay, so that's what we... Please note, Mr. Maitland did an analysis of the densest zoning we have for residential, and he came up with a unit number of 80. That reflects the zoning of this community, and it is not appropriate to try to destroy the basic planning in this community. That's what this looks like. It's a destructive process. So that's what we're asking you to think about, is we have a zoning plan, you're an attorney, you can look at this with ease and see what our densities are. We are not Stanford.
The only word I would perhaps take some exception to would be destroy. Certainly a significant change, I recognize.
Any, I mean, we welcome any information that you want to send through staff. You know, we're avid readers.
And your staff is an avid recipient, I understand that.
So if you want to send us stuff that talks about things you've done, you know, we certainly have attended the seminars given by your firm in the past, so please do send us information on projects so that we may educate ourselves.
Thank you very much for your time.
All right.
Do we have opposing counsel here? No, okay. Sorry, I was just asking, sorry.
We have 11 people who have signed up to speak. So I think, given the hour, why don't we start with three minutes? And if you need more, just come back at the end of the line and keep going.
We'll stay.
We'll start with Peter out. I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm going to go by the order on the list, sir. Peter Alexander, and you will be timed.
Is the clock running?
Yes, Peter Levy is our clockmaker.
Yes, my name's Peter Alexander, and I want to thank Post Road Iron Works in some ways. My first legal job was at Post Road Iron Works in 1964. They taught me how to weld and drive a 32 flatbed truck for delivery. It was pretty exciting. I asked my boss, "How come the 10 or 11 other guys weren't driving?" And they said, "Well, they were all illegal aliens, and they couldn't drive." So some things don't change after 50 years, it seems. They had fled Italy because they were not pro-communist, which was cool back then. And I am motivated to be here tonight to make sure you understand how political this is. Our current congressman, bathed in Wall Street guilt, got into affordable housing as his second career. Now he represents us in Washington. Our current senator is very, very much in favor of continuing having revenue come in from tenants, as well as support both the UN, the United States, the regional and state incentives to have affordable housing as a social engineering tool. I was at a, you may remember, I was on the Historic District Commission for 15 years, including being the chairman, and I was thrown off because I objected to a couple of things, especially the tearing down of the power plant, but that's a different story. I was in a meeting in Bridgeport where Mayor Finch was the opening remark, and he asked everyone if you'd raise your hands if you lived in suburbia. And the people that did from all over the state, he says, "Do you realize you use seven times the energy that a city dweller lives? You should all feel guilty." And I think that's kind of what we're talking about now. We're talking about social engineering. We're talking about cities first, towns maybe, maybe second, third, or sometimes later. I looked at the documents that were in, were published, looked like they were put out yesterday, and I thought we were going to be going through the HODZ, not how many sprinklers we need and so forth. But I would like to get back to some of those points. I won't use my three minutes up, I hope. I just want to make sure that I feel we are giving you the chance that planning and zoning didn't take, almost exactly 50 years ago, after we started the citification of Greenwich by building the Greenwich Plaza with a 40-year lease that was now an 80-year lease. I think we have a chance to get it right, that the physiography of our town, the serious, serious north-south waterways that are dictated by the north-south geographic location of our resistant metamorphic ridges, and the very, very tight east-west corridor that we're talking about here, is a very inappropriate place for this construction. We know that there's a serious effort underway, that there are at least seven other similar projects in the works to be put in front of you in a short period of time, and most of them are in part relying on the one-mile radii around railroad stations. But it also is bus stops. If we don't stand up and say we want to be a town, not a city, I think we're going to be blowing a chance to be the best friends of Bridgeport, for instance, who is going to build affordable housing in Bridgeport when it's forced on other communities. We're hurting Bridgeport if you approve this. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda Bruno?
Thank you for the, can you hear me?
Mm-hmm.
Is this good? Okay. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. My name is Linda Bruno, and I have lived at 81 Valley Drive for 23 years. My home is located near the corner of Oak Street and Hemlock Drive. I oppose the proposed apartment building at 345 West Putnam Avenue. I'm concerned about the impact of this project, both during construction and post-construction. My house has a septic system. We are not served by the town sewer system. The homes of my next-door neighbors at 79 Valley Drive, Mrs. Esme Dick, and 83 Valley Drive, Mr. Agostino Sinisi, also have septic systems. I have permission from these neighbors to speak tonight on their behalf. As an aside tonight, I learned that homes very close, even closer to the proposed complex at 42 and 36 Oak Streets also have septic systems. A high-water table impacts the efficient functioning of our septic systems. This can, a high-water table would result from direct rainfall, as well as storm water that travels from higher elevations onto our properties. Our homes in the 81, 79, and 83 Valley Drives have a lower elevation than many homes elsewhere on Valley, as well as Oak Street and Hemlock Drives. Storm water currently flows downhill from the corner of Oak and Hemlock, onto my front yard and that of my next-door neighbor at number 83. My neighbor at 79 Valley Drive has a small stream on her property, which, during storms, fills with water that has traveled down a steep hill from a nebudding property. This stream empties into a pond in front of her home, and her septic system is located very close to this pond. Post-construction, the amount of impervious surfaces extending north into the RA1 zone created by parking lots and walkways of this large complex will likely result in increased water flow across Oak Street and downhill toward our homes. In addition, the extensive blasting that will be required to construct the garage of the proposed building will have an unknown impact on the current patterns of underground water flow. This may have a very damaging effect of increasing the water table for nearby homeowners. In summary, my neighbors and I are very concerned about the ramifications of septic system problems to our health and the health of the nearby pond at 79 Valley. Once blasting and construction begins, it may be too late to reverse this impact. I respectfully request that the application be denied. Thank you.
Thank you. Nick Catalano? Could you...
Nick Cataldo, 27 Hemlock Drive. I'm a resident of Greenwich, Connecticut, for 23 years. My background is engineering. I deal with multinational companies that audit technology companies, do surveys on audits and fabrication of electronic systems. And one of the key things that these multinationals look for is abiding by the OSHA requirements, by environmental requirements, and making sure that hazardous waste is taken care of appropriately. So I have a lot of experience in this field. We have also hired our own LEP firm that will be speaking at one of the next hearing. But to summarize, I think the agency pointed out earlier that you have to supervise the work that gets done, because, I'll show you some cases here. If you look at the screen behind you, this property's been around for quite some time, as we see. And you'll see from the historical records, it was a quarry. And needless to say, a lot of contamination was dumped in quarries back in the day. This is a way to get rid of a lot of deposited soils and excess materials in a convenient way. If you look at the history of the Post Road, you'll find that there have been a lot of spills over the last 50, 60 years. And if you go to the DEP records, you'll find that some of these have been cleaned up, and some still exist, and some problems with some pretty hefty contaminants still reside on the Post Road. You know, the applicant is stating that they're going to do a good job in cleaning up. Well, I'll show you some examples right here on the Post Road. If you look at the list from the DEP, this is just on Post Road alone, that contaminations have existed, have occurred, some have been tried to cleaned up, and some remediations still are not in full effect. The site we're talking about is a site that has had several contaminations occur adjacent to it, and right on the site itself, there have been spills, and DEP has identified certain contaminations that were picked up, and it was actually given to the Tri-Mont LEP in terms of pointing out some areas that were missed in their report. So when I went to the records in the DEP, you'll see that there's quite a few hazardous waste producers that are on record in Hartford, Connecticut, including what we're seeing today, PRI. If you look at a spill that occurred adjoining this property, it occurred years ago, and the reports were filed. PCE was spilled into the soils. This contamination actually creeped under the building of 345 West Putnam. The soil that was contaminated is the blue area. That's marked in a big X. And that PCE seeped under 345. The record shows that the contamination was not all cleaned up, and there was actions to continue this cleanup, and it was never remediated. So this goes to the agency's point, who's overseeing the remediation? And who's going to be watching what actually gets cleaned up? All this soil drains down to the northeast section, where we pointed out, to a pond, and it's a residential area. So once this site gets developed, and the applicant moves on with 310,000 units, or whatever the number is today, he's left the contamination for the rest of the town. And that's a taxpayer's headache, okay?
Are you almost done?
I'll be through in one minute here. So we've also found contamination on the corner of Edgewood and Post Road, the Coswell Development. When the Coswell property owner has called the contaminant, which was Mercedes, to find out when the cleanup would occur, they pointed their fingers to the DEP and told them to go talk to the DEP when it will be cleaned up. So again, supervision is definitely needed in any type of remediation, regardless of what the applicants say they're going to do. So that's my point for this evening.
Do you have any materials that you can submit to? We have it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, I have submitted to the agency.
Thanks.
I think it's actually in the agenda, too.
Thank you. Jonathan, it's not Hughes, I know, but...
Yes, it is Jonathan Hughes.
Oh.
Well read.
I got the last one. I got the last one wrong. I figure I might go two for two, but...
Thank you. Good evening. Yes, my name is Jonathan Hughes. I'm here wearing two hats. One, I'm a resident of Oak Street, number 28. Two, I am the Chair of the Greenwich Neighborhoods Preservation Association, GNPA, which was formed the last time this applicant bothered us all for so long, several years ago, and I'll come back to that in a moment. I was going to say a lot of things this evening. I'm not going to say very much now, partly because I'd like to cede some of my time to Nick Cataldo, because he's much more important than I am. There are two real things I'd like to focus on. One, as the staff knows, and I hope the commission knows, we have communicated now over several weeks, either directly or through our own attorneys, and tried to identify important issues that we think should be addressed. We, as Nick Cataldo just mentioned, also have hired our own professionals to do work which we hope will benefit everybody in reaching a good conclusion here. We haven't brought those forward tonight. We will bring them forward when or if and when this applicant cures the rampant deficiencies in its application. I've simply lost count, as I'm sure you all have, of the number of questions that remain outstanding. And just to debunk one of many propositions from the applicant, this applicant has had an awful long time to produce all of this information, and only now is producing information or working on contamination issues that GNPA raised over four years ago at the Wetlands Agency. Unfortunately, this commission didn't get a chance to hear about it then because the Wetlands Agency, having declined that application, the application was withdrawn from the commission. I raise it now, partly to make that point, but also to urge the commission to look at the history of the target application. Quickly, you will be able to debunk another proposition from this applicant, that it is somehow part of the solution. It is a laughable proposition to suggest that. Last time around, this applicant, and it's all the same people apart from their professionals, they sought the one possibility they thought at the time could get their application by this town. That time, it was a CCRC overlay zone regulation, which bizarrely is still on the books. This time, it's an 830G. The notion that somehow some benevolent developer got together with a bunch of like-minded professionals to come up with a good answer here is pretty obviously not the case. The history is really important for a variety of reasons. You've touched on it for yourselves a number of times. The one other thing I'd ask you to focus on in looking at that history is the number of times this set of applicants has been non-transparent or deliberately failed to disclose information, which it knows and which we all know is relevant to a fair assessment of the application. I have listed in my communications with the staff several examples, by no means exhaustive, of the times at which this applicant has failed to do what we all think is fair and appropriate. It may not be a specific reason to overturn an 830G application, but it is an important factor in assessing whether this set of applicants is reliable in any way at all. I will come back to speak to you another day. If I've got any time left, please give it to Nick Cataldo.
Thank you. Lynn Lavery?
Good evening. It's good to see you. Thank you very much for your tremendous time and effort serving on this board. It's really amazing, and I'm very impressed. My name is Lynn Lavery. My husband Tracy and I have lived on Alden Road for 33 years. We are two blocks from this site. And my first objection, and we feel I do also represent the 14 homes on Alden Road and have spoken to all of them. My first objection is to the text amendment. I understand the need for affordable housing. I've done some work on it in the town, but I must say, we have never tried to solve a large-scale problem, as Mr. Maitland says, by jamming it into one site. We have never had a policy of addressing issues in this fashion. This will not solve the issue. I am opposed to the text amendment. The text amendment has the possibility of changing the character, not only of the Post Road, but for the entire town. This should make a significant -- this would make a significant impact on our entire town. And honestly, how many other three-to-seven acre pieces are there on the Post Road? This is unfortunately spot zoning. The second thing I'd like to talk about is the Post Road versus this sweet little neighborhood. The Post Road is a very small section of what we're talking about in this development. This sweet neighborhood has houses right adjacent to the Post Road, and, as we've spoken about tonight, is truly lovely. Oak Street, by the way, though, is very difficult to drive. I'd like you to think about Cognewa. It's really a tough, tough street. Now, the third thing I'd like to talk about is the exemption that we're asking for to our zoning. When planning and zoning chooses to make an exemption like this and to allow something like this to happen, I personally would like to see some documentation of need. I'd like to know who I'm really dealing with, who's really going to be maintaining this property. I'm very concerned about it. You know, there's this funny thing on Facebook. I'm sure none of you are on Facebook, but there's this funny thing on Facebook where they say, "You know you're from Greenwich if," and they ask a question. So I ask you, you know you're from Greenwich if you know what the hole in the ground is.
Yes.
Well, I live very near what that hole in the ground was, and it's now CVS, and it's Citarella, and it's one hell of a lot of traffic. And all the car dealerships in that end of town, it's a lot of traffic. It's an extremely dangerous section. And I'd ask you in six months, if we're still talking about this issue, to go back and look at the accident record, because it's about to happen on the corner of Valley Drive. And this is very close to that. But to go back to my hole in the ground, you're gambling on our neighborhood. Basically, I don't really see that we have demonstrated a need for this building. And I would like to know really clearly who we're dealing with before we offer this special indulgence and let this happen. I had on my notes, honestly, from the very beginning, the comment about the urban environment, because that was brought up at Wetlands, it was brought up in the application, and I personally resent it. This is not an urban environment. This really is truly a residential environment, and this is honestly inappropriate. And the second part that's inappropriate, and that was about a third of the first page of this summary, the other two-thirds, was the POCD. I spent a lot of time on the POCD. We all did. But the POCD, let me give you a couple of quick quotes. First of all, it's mostly about conservation. But I must say, the goals as stated are protect and enhance well-defined neighborhoods. This is a well-defined neighborhood. Protect and enhance water and land natural resources. Another one for you. Development should be discouraged or prohibited when it is not compatible with and does not preserve existing land use patterns. So I'm telling you, you may call this the Post Road, but it's not. It's a residential neighborhood. Thank you for all your time.
Jane Isford?
Hey, you're doing good.
Getting better. As the hour goes on, we're getting better.
Good.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Jane Isford. I've lived on Hemlock Drive with my family for 18 years, and I've been a resident of Greenwich for 22 years. We love our home and our neighborhood that is a quiet and peaceful area, but also allows us to enjoy all the convenience of being close to town. And in fact, that's one of the reasons that Neil and I bought our home on Hemlock Drive in 1998. It is a wonderful neighborhood, with many of us having lived there for decades. Thank you to the commission members for giving up your time for all of us and allowing us to speak this evening about the application. I'm very tired. I'm sure you must be more so. As soon as this application was filed, our association president contacted the applicant in writing through their council and asked that we meet with them to discuss the new application that was of great concern to us. Their council responded in writing that the application and its supporting detail speak for themselves, and they would not meet with us at this time, which was very disappointing. It's apparent by what the applicant and their council submitted in mid-January to you that they've been working on this for some time. Council for the applicant has begun using phrases like, "In due time, we will have all of the required documentation into the agency and the commission." With respect, due time for an application of this magnitude and complexity was back in January, when they first submitted it to you, in my humble opinion. You will all recall, as Lynn was just mentioning, the big hole in the ground for years on West Putnam Avenue where CVS has now been built. Please do not allow that to happen to our neighborhood. This application from Post Road Iron Works is massive compared to CVS. At 400,000 square feet and seven stories, it would be the size of four town halls, and I believe the impact of this on our neighborhood would be devastating. Hemlock Drive is a quiet street with limited traffic. A lot of people don't even know that it exists unless they happen to stumble upon it or are lost, and I have to be honest, we kind of like it that way. I expect our street would turn into a parking lot if this application is allowed to proceed, given the increased volume of traffic that would be pushed back onto Hemlock, Oak, Valley Drive, and Edgewood. I doubt that 559 parking spots would be nearly enough for this development, as most families nowadays have two cars. So where will all of that overflow parking by residents of the complex go? I would assume it would be pushed back into our neighborhood and onto our streets. And that does not reflect the home or the neighborhood that we or my neighbors bought into. I'm also concerned about the danger to pedestrians and young children in our neighborhood with this proposal. There's a blind curve on Hemlock Drive at precisely where this development would back onto Hemlock, and I witnessed an accident at that corner that took out a utility pole, seen a few other close calls, and we have families with very young children that live along Hemlock at that location. In my humble opinion, this application is extremely deficient. This is a precedent-setting application for our neighborhood, all-town residents, and our community. I thank you very much for your time for protecting our neighborhood and our town, and I would ask this application be denied. Thank you.
Peter Quigley?
Good evening. My name is Peter Quigley. I've stood before this commission several times. I must applaud you this evening for the questions that are being bandied and asked this evening of the applicant. I would suggest that you deny this application, but I'm here as a resident. I was here back in 211. At that point, was an RTM member on Land Use Committee, sort of as a waterpoint person, and have been connecting the dots and the water management issues in town. And I very much applaud the questions that are going on now that didn't happen in 211. But you know, the issues are the same. And the application was denied then, and it will probably be denied again this time round. It really is about the size, the scale, the scope, the excavation, the denuding of the functions of a wetland and water course area. This will be determined by Wetlands, but you are asking some very good questions tonight. So I'm going to focus on a couple of those questions to bring a little clarity from what I've learned connecting the dots, and you all seem to be asking questions that a lot of us are happy to hear. And the question, main question I have is, why isn't the town doing more? Doing more in its water and soil testing protocols? Doesn't seem to be anybody taking the lead here. And in fact, when you looked at this application, it's really Public Works that should be coming in with their Flood and Erosion Control Board to be talking about soil and water testing at this site. This site's a commercial site for 100 years. How they're using residential standards to be testing on a commercial site is, to me, incredulous. It's been contaminating the soil in that area for 100 years. This town ought to have professionals coming in to refute independent applicants on just how deep is this contamination. By commercial standards, you should be going down as deep as you have to go when you discover various chemicals in the soil, lead, mercury, PCVs. You just keep going till you find the stopping point. You don't cap. And some of the town projects that are used to capping, that really isn't probably the best standard for the health and welfare of the residents in this town. So soil testing and water testing really has to be looked at here. But I want to go at the major point that was said. This site cannot accommodate this structure. Why? There isn't enough takeaway. You are in a major waterway called Horse Neck Creek. If you go to the CDM study that was produced in 211 to taxpayer funding of $1 million, and you add up where Horse Neck Creek needs storm drain systems, not sewers. The storm water goes into the sewers, overloads them, and they implode. It's not the sanitary sewers. Get the storm drain people in here and determine in seven areas, in high priority, in this report of 65 projects, seven in the top 15 are in Horse Neck Creek, and it totals about $30 million of repair work that needs to be done for storm drain systems. You can't take the water in the sewer away if, in storm events, which is rain one inch in three or four hours, it's going to overload the systems. And Horse Neck Creek, as we all know in the macro way, is one of the most flooded watersheds in this town. So it probably will be stopped at Wetlands, but you all are asking the right questions. Can this development, in the scope and scale that it has, regardless of the traffic conditions, the character of the neighborhoods, all the other issues that are inconsistent with the plan of conservation and development that you've all brought up tonight, by the way, can this site take effectively its sewer end? Can the Horse Neck Creek watershed handle the flow of water if you're going to need, by the town, $35 or $40 million of storm-drained system in the area? Now, if you had the Public Works Commissioner here and you asked her, what did she think? Do you know what she says? Any of you know why they're not doing this? They don't have the funding. The BET will not fund this. So therefore, the pressure has to be on developers that want to come into these areas, develop these huge projects, and don't have enough water takeaway in order to deal with the sewage and the storm water as they come together. That doesn't count that the wetlands that are going to be denuded, the functions of the wetlands now with the impervious surface, start adding the flow of the water to the water quality and the quantity, and that's why I'm now a member of the Harbor Commission. I'm now dealing with all the stuff that's coming into the harbor. And it's because of this kind of development that's allowed why the harbor's silting up, why there's sedimentation, erosion heading into the harbors, and why the town has a huge dredging issue, big-time dredging issue. Thank you very much. My three minutes have gone.
Is that three minutes?
You ask, and you shall receive. It's your turn.
It is an unusual pleasure, ladies and gentlemen, for me to be able to address you again and again and again. It's all becoming all-too-common. I sent in to your town planner my comments on the new regulation, this HODZ, so I won't address that. I also, this is a lot to chew on tonight. We're talking about the site plan. We're talking about the new regulation that enables the site plan and all of that. I'm going to just focus on the site plan, on the, excuse me, not the site plan, it's another night.
The site plan is tonight.
But it's another night that will address this, because I gather this is going to be a long meal that we're going to be back and forth on the site plan.
This is the only hearing you're going to have? No, this will be left open.
That's what I'm saying, yeah. And written commas, otherwise. I think what I'm basically looking at, the house of this code change, as I said in my comments to the town planner and to this board, is of such a huge sea change in our planning event, as you've mentioned out. It's such a large change in the situation and the face of it, that if actually it rises a level of what would be consistent with an amendment to the POCD, I would put before you that this cannot be handled. This is a simple code change of changing heights or something like that in residential areas, or jostling and tinkering. This is a major, major change in what the town would allow, in the character of it and everything, for all the reasons you've brought about. And I would put to you that in order for this code to be put in place, it would have to be approved by the RTM as an amendment. Leave it at that. But the question on this thing is, who is the major beneficiary of the Housing Opportunity Development Zone? Who receives the greatest windfall for the smallest cost? Who really gains? Who really loses? The town, the neighbors, the new condo owners, the low-income renters? Or does the developer walk away with an obscene bundle of money and never look back? This applicant reminds me of the gentle innocent who asked permission of his neighbor to plant a field of dandelions, a beautiful blanket of yellow sunshine, he says. And of the greater fool, his neighbor or golf course, who compromises for only a small patch of dandelions along the neighbor's border. Let us face the question. Is the dandelion a flower providing fleeting beauty or a predator weed, a parasite weed which sucks lifeblood? which sucks the lifeblood, blood out of its neighbors? Can a dandelion exist in natural harmony with a grass lawn? It's spring now. It's time for us to act on it. Here we are. The dandelion. It's pretty, yellow flower pleases for the moment, then it dies. Then it spreads its virulent seeds on gossamer fluff. Soon, many little yellow flowers pop up everywhere in the sunshine. While we're admiring the blossom, the dandelion is shooting out wide tough leaves which smother than kill its host, the carefully groomed and nurtured lawn grass. Then the dandelion dies again, leaving a lawn of ugly dead patches, destroying the value and enjoyment of the whole lawn, blighting the whole plant community, desecrating a verdant neighborhood. Next, the weed invades another lawn complex next door and spreads from one to the next. Once the dandelion sets its roots, it takes a war of destruction to remove it. Simply cutting it down seems only to strengthen the plant. And it comes back bigger than before. The root anchors deeply in the soil, digging it out leaves splotches of devastation and often fails in the attempt. Only chemical warfare seems efficiently to drive the enemy from your home. How drastic that is, what a lasting health cost. Better the dandelion has never been allowed in. Only the totally insane and naive would voluntarily seed their lawns with dandelions, expecting a pleasant accent of yellow here and there across their green lawn. No one invites the dandelion in. Why invite this Housing Opportunity Development Zone in? Or H O D Z, which I'm wondering how that's pronounced. I believe it might be hosed. Thank you.
Barbara Huber?
You can pull the mic down.
Yeah, okay, thanks. I'm new at this. Hi, I'm Barbara Huber. I live on 24 Oak Street. We've lived there for 14 years. I have four children. And I'm concerned about the public and health, safety of the children in the neighborhood. First of all, it's the bus issue. I know it's the intention of this development to have the bus stop on Oak Street, but I've actually tried to have that done, thinking that was a good idea, and I was denied. And why I was denied, they would absolutely not have the bus go down Oak Street because of the curves. And in the winter, it's not a primary plowing street. The curves are too steep when the snow gets on the, you know, on the sides. And going on and off on both ends, it's tricky for a bus to maneuver. So they completely denied a bus stop on Oak Street when I tried to get that. I would also, so that bus that would go that way would be, what I was looking for was the Glenville bus. That's where it would be zoned, is the Glenville zone. And just speaking of Glenville, it was just newly redeveloped. And from the beginning, I'm pretty sure they've had spacing issues, so I'm not even sure. I think the capacity is pretty full at Glenville as it is, and I don't think that's fair for the children either to have all those other extra children coming in. I mean, that's something that, you know, you'd have to speak to the principal about, but I think that's another issue that should be considered, is what all these children are going to do to our school systems. So back to the bus issue. I'm actually deemed too close to Western Middle School to get a bus. So I took a little unscientific, I tried to, I did the, you know, measurement from my driveway to Western versus where the driveway would be, and it was about the same. So my guess would be that perhaps this whole plan would not get a bus. Is that, I mean, I'm not sure how that works, but since I was too close, I would assume that since they're the same distance, they would not get a bus either. So there would be driving down to Western, and they already have a drop-off issue at Western. It's very backed up, and kids drop their kids off all over the place. And that's a safety concern. And if you walk down, there's not contiguous sidewalks all the way down to Western, and it gets snow and cold. And I asked for a bus because I said, you know, I'm so close, you just pass by. And they said, no, you're too close. You don't get a bus, and your child can walk. And some people think that that's safe, but I don't think safe walking on West Putnam is a safe thing to do, especially in the snow when it's icy and it's not properly cleared and there's not sidewalks all the way down. And especially, you know, there's a lot of accidents, and they have to pass a lot of driveways going in and out of CVS and all of these gas stations. And like you said, there's lots of accidents. And a bunch of that many children walking en masse down to Western, I think, is not safe. The bus that I could get if I wanted to pay for would be on the corner of Hemlock and Edgewood, which is a hard walk from where I live. And that's not really all that safe. And the bus for Greenwich High School is actually across the street, and I'm not sure they would make special concessions for this project. It's across the street, so you'd have a whole bunch of teenagers crossing Putnam, you know, darting across. And that's not safe, even though it's early in the morning. I think that's something to be considered as well. I don't, like I said, I don't know if they're going to make special considerations for this project. I don't know if they should, because, you know, that's more effective what Greenwich residents have to deal with. And so anyway, I'm concerned about the children and the crowded middle schools and the safety along the walking to the bus stops. It's hard for the kids to walk down to the bus stop. The bus stop right now for Glenville is at the corner of Hemlock and Oak, and that's a hard walk. And especially if they go en masse, you know, it's curvy at the end of the street there. So, and I, you know, I also would like some kind of guarantee that that entrance on Oak Street would just be used for emergencies, because I can see now with the parking, you know, that's a nice little sidewalk. People are going to just park along Oak Street and walk up. And are there, another issue that I was thinking about was like pets. Are there pets allowed in this, in this building? Because everyone's going to be walking down that nice sidewalk onto Oak Street. And I love dogs, but, you know, I don't like 500 of them, or how many there are going to be. So, you know, right in front of my yard and because people sometimes can be lazy, you know, maybe they'll just go to the end of the sidewalk, and that's where the kids are proposed to stand, too. So I don't think that's necessarily, health-wise, a good thing for the kids, you know, that there's no green space on the project or anything of that sort. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Very nice.
John Ryan?
Good morning, commission members. And thank you for volunteering. My name is John Ryan, RTM and District 7. I live on Weaver Street. Based on what was presented this evening, 355 units, approximately two and a half possibly residents per unit, that's close to 900 residents. So the question that comes up is how many children? Currently with our districting, as the last presenter just pointed out, Glenville School would be the elementary school. They are near capacity. I have children there now, I know that. Then for middle school, you have to be more than one and a half miles away to get busing. And currently, there's a 1.1 mile difference between Oak Street and Western, so they definitely would be walking or being driven by their parents. And as the last presenter mentioned, there's a number of street crossings without a light. So when you leave Oak, when you have Oak Street to cross, then you have Old Post Road Number Two to cross with no light, Old Post Road Number Three to cross with no light. And then finally, you get to Valley, and there's a light there, but you still have quite a ways to go. We had concerns about our children near the CVS intersection ever walking that way. We would never allow them to walk that way. There's no crossing guard until you get to the state line deli to get to Western. So Western's pretty full right now as well. Even Hamilton Avenue, as a magnet school, is pretty full, and there's certainly significant traffic issues there, especially drop-off in the morning, if you've ever tried that. Pedestrian traffic. We all know that Mercedes employees try to cross West Putnam Avenue. We catch them in the middle of the road all the time. Can you imagine 900 residents in this complex? All they want to do is go to McDonald's across the street. So there's that traffic concern of residents trying to cross West Putnam to get to Wendy's, to get to McDonald's. And it's not safe, and we've all seen that. It's not near parks, there's no playground. Where are they going to go? Are they going to go to the Boys and Girls Club? That's quite a walk. I'm not really sure what park they're going to go to nearby. Something I'd like to ask the commission to consider is whether or not it's feasible, considering the fact that this site has been used as an industrial purpose for 90-some-odd years. Would it make sense at all for the commission to consider putting an industrial overlay on the property? Would that benefit the commission and the town in any way? So please consider that. I'd also like to know the actual finished roof elevation of the property above sea level. So currently, if you look at the building 440 West Putnam, it's a very high point on West Putnam. In fact, that's why most of the cell towers are on top of that building. So I'd like to know what the elevation of this rooftop would be relative to that rooftop, and whether or not we would see a number of cell towers being proposed on top of this new building. I'd like to know who is going to pay for the Horse Neck sewer improvements? Is this somehow going to become a town problem and a town expense? I'd like to know if there was ever an emergency at this complex, does the town have the resources to temporarily relocate 900 residents? I'd like to know, finally, to close things up. In terms of this being a text amendment, I found this on the RT, on the town website. It's been produced by the Planning and Zoning Commission staff, and this is just a few pages of all the text amendments that have happened over the last 20 years. These are small, minor changes. These aren't, these aren't a whole new document. These are minor changes. These are text amendments. What's been presented before the commission is something entirely new, unprecedented. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, sir. Just for the record, we, I think you said 440 West Putnam. I think you were referring to 411 West Putnam. Are you talking about the Wexford building?
I'm sorry, yes, yes. Thank you, thank you.
Carrie Breed?
I brought you some pictures. Hello, my name is Carrie Breed, and I live at 30 Hemlock Drive. And we are right next to this proposed development. And my husband has, he bought the house 13 years ago. We got married five years ago. We have two beautiful boys, three and four years old. And we are very concerned about many things that were raised tonight. Contamination, traffic issues, construction issues, you know, what's going to go on with all these people after they move in, and the destruction to the neighborhood. And it is an incredibly peaceful environment where we live now. It's, like she said, it's, you know, four and, over four and a half acres of this proposed development is in residential area, R1. And I can, I'm going to play a little bit of what it sounds like at night. There's wood frogs, there's all kinds of living creatures in this beautiful wooded area that we live in. And what's going to happen after this goes up? Am I going to hear fire alarms going off? Ambulances coming? Kids partying on balconies because that's the only place that they can go to? I mean, you know, fire alarms going off because there's kids in the building and they're having fun, you know, pulling, pulling pranks? Who knows? But the entire neighborhood in our beautiful residential areas are going to get destroyed with this development. So this is another picture here of our house, is right here on the left-hand side, and this is where 24 Hemlock is. And this is where that small sliver will be, which, who knows? They say it's not going to, there's not going to be a road there, there's not going to be access there, but after it goes in, who knows, right? And this is another photo from our, our house. And this is our neighbor at 24 Hemlock. And you can see the Post Road Iron Works building right here, and this large crane that they have. And I can't even imagine what, seven stories, five stories, over two, whatever they're proposing, would look like in this beautiful neighborhood. So I would urge you to deny this. Thank you very much for your time.
Could you, the applicant, there is a crane there. Could you give us the current elevation of that crane so we could have some reference to how high the building would be?
Excuse me, before that happens, Ms. Breed, did you file under Section 22A-19 of the statutes as an intervenor? I believe you, you're Carrie Breed, correct?
Yes, yes.
And I have a document that you signed.
Right.
Requesting intervenor status, is that correct?
Right.
Okay.
And I brought copies for, and I gave them to Patrick.
Yes, okay, thank you. I just, I think it's important to note for the record that you have filed for that status.
Yeah, I'm a part of the GNPA as well. The Greenwich Neighborhood Protection Association.
But it's you that filed as an intervenor, not the GNPA.
Yes, I'm an adjoining neighbor and...
Okay, so as an adjoining neighbor...
It actually doesn't have to be an adjoining neighbor, does it? I don't remember. You sent us the statute earlier today, and I...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Might I just help on that score? This is the third time we've had to file an intervention. We've simply followed our prior practice where just one person has filed as the intervenor. We do talk to each other.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I think that's it.
Apologies, you thought you got rid of me. One thing I forgot to ask is, given the weight of information that is due to be presented to the commission, I'm sure the commission would like to have plenty of time to review it. We would also like a suitable amount of time to review it. The Wetlands Agency, I think, was asked to give us three weeks between submission of the relevant full application, all of the information, not just bits of it, before the next hearing is then scheduled. I'd ask for the same courtesy on this occasion.
We've received an extension from them into July, is that what we filed? So next time, hopefully they'll have it when they come.
Katie does everything she can to make it available to the public. I don't know what you can do to disseminate sooner. I mean, we don't get it till two days before we meet, but...
We're certainly happy with the dissemination we get from the staff. It's always extremely helpful. I'm more concerned about the weight of information that clearly needs some sensible review. We have a lot of people, we're paying a lot of money to help this commission come to the right sort of conclusion. It's simply inappropriate for the applicant to file, and it has done this on many occasions in the past, sorry to refer to history again, but we just would like due process, I think it's called.
But I think it is a very important point, and we should ask the, I think the commission should ask the applicant what date they intend to have the traffic information, and you've already given the environmental report date of April 19th, but 18th, thank you. But the sewer infrastructure question and the traffic question, and not to mention all the points in the report and what have you, but I think if you could give us some sort of timeline, you have given us an extension through to July 9th at this point. So I would imagine that, well, what is the date that you think you will be providing that information to us? If you could, thank you.
The answer, excuse me, Robert Bircham for the applicant. The answer to your question, there'll be multiple dates because the information is in several various subjects. So perhaps, subject to the will and determination of the commission, what we could do is, within the next week, submit a letter to you summarizing the items that remain outstanding and giving you the projected dates of anticipated response, rather than simply wing it.
Very helpful.
One other thing, I just want to know if you could, I'm just suggesting that you make an attempt to talk to the neighbors at some point, and maybe you want to think about that and have a meeting with them.
I appreciate the recommendation, and talking is a two-way street, and to that extent, we're certainly amenable to having a dialogue.
Attorney Bircham, if we have a tape that we are recording this meeting this evening, and obviously, we can provide you with that much faster than we can provide you with the transcription. So I'd like to provide you with the tape, because I think it would be important to go back through and document all of the items that were raised during the hearing this evening. And if you could include that in your letter, I would think that would be very helpful.
Well, I hope that my colleagues have been taking very good notes, but I appreciate the ability to get the tape. It will confirm that we've missed nothing.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, quick.
I'm sorry, sir.
I think the issue that the neighbors were raising, and I was there at the Inland Wetlands with the discussion down, was the wetlands found that they were getting frustrated by not receiving in a timely fashion sufficient, and they set a final end date by which submissions should be made in full. And I think that's what the neighbors are asking.
We'll work with them on that.
Yeah, we're, I think what the neighbors are asking for is the commission to set for the applicant a date by which they must, you know, fish or cut bait in applying their things.
Thank you.
Is that what the commission intends to do? I didn't hear that from the response.
We'll see when they submit what they've said they're going to submit. That's it? We'll leave it open?
Is their counsel done?
I'm sorry, you, you get last word, so if you're done, you're done.
Good night.
Good night.
I'd like to move approval of the March 22 minutes that were done by Mr. Maitland, the secretary. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and the meeting is adjourned at 12:25.